You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to me. One place I send my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one, heard around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville. Talking about my hometown Fayetteville.
Good evening and welcome to the regular Fayetteville City Council meeting for October 14th, 2017. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Chip Grammer to come to the podium. If you would lead us with the invocation, please remain at the podium afterwards to tell us something about your mission. If I could get everybody to please stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance to follow.
Pray with me, praise. Heavenly Father, we come tonight on urgent business. We represent all the people of this city. We need your heart. We need your eyes that we might feel and see the need of every person in this community. Give us the courage to act and do what is right. Give us the courage to right wrongs. Give us the courage to make good decisions and the wisdom, Lord, the wisdom that Solomon had to guide us as we move this city forward. Watch over us, watch over this fair city, and continue to bless it now and into its future, we pray. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Grammer.
Yes, sir.
You have been a servant in this community for a long, long time. Tell us something about yourself and something about Sherwood Presbyterian.
Well, I spent 24 years in the Army and retired here at Fort Bragg as a Provo Marshal. And then moved into the school system, was Chief of Security there, and then went into full-time ministry in 2001. I have been at Sherwood Presbyterian out in Graves Creek the last four years and it has been a blessing. But also, something very near and dear to my heart and near and dear to this community is the fact that I have been very involved in Hurricane Matthew disaster relief. I'm the Chair of the Unmet Needs Committee. And there is a lot going on in this community, a lot that we don't see. And I think that's the issue as far as I'm concerned. It's not like Lumberton where you drive down I-95 and you can see all the devastation. But there is a lot of devastation, a lot of lives that have been touched. And a lot of wonderful things have been done, but a lot needs to be done as well. So that's what we're working on now.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service. Thank you for being here. Counsel, I had asked staff to prepare a proclamation in reference to the tragedy that happened in Charlottesville, Charlottesville, Virginia. But Counsel, I ask, instead of a proclamation, let me read the wording that we adopted as a resolution jointly, rather than a proclamation. Says, "Whereas the city of Fayetteville stands strong with Charlottesville, Virginia in their time of unrest, and whereas we must all rise up together against violence, hate, bigotry of all races and cultures. And whereas Mahatma Gandhi said, 'No violence is not a garment to be put on and off at will. Its seat is in the heart and it must be an inseparable part of our being.'" So, "Whereas the city of Fayetteville will continue to be a leader in the county and the state against violent protests. And whereas with respect and compassion, we embrace diversity and we celebrate our different cultures." Now therefore, I, Nat Robertson, Mayor of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby honorably proclaim the 14th of August of the year 2017 to be Stand with Charlottesville, Virginia Day. And invite all citizens to observe this day and remember that we are stronger than hate and bigotry and united against those evils. Counsel, do I have a motion to turn this proclamation into a resolution?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
It's a...
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Colvin, seconded by Pastor McDougal. Thank you. Counsel, any discussion? I'll ask for your vote, please. That's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you. At this point, I would like to introduce our new police chief to say a few words and maybe a minute or two on her vision for the city of Fayetteville in her first official appearance. Welcome, Chief Hawkins.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. First of all, thank you sincerely, everyone, for the amazing greeting, welcome to the city. Thank you for this honor and this privilege to be in the city of Fayetteville. As you mentioned, Mayor, you know how diverse this city is. The ability to be able to serve in this community, to serve in this community that has the heart of service is just a sincere privilege because I've dedicated most of my life to service. My vision is pretty much going to be simple. For public safety, we're involved in just about every aspect of a community. Every aspect from problem solving, ultimately to keep the community safe. My vision is for the police department to become the premier nationwide city for public safety through community engagement and community involvement, teaching the rest of the world how to work together in keeping our community safe.
Thank you, Chief. We look forward to working with you on that.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll recognize Councilmember Jensen to talk about some of her activities with the youth council and to introduce our FCYC member.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council has been still busy over the summer. I would like to acknowledge Ms. Crystal Glover, the Director or Head of our Cumberland County Fayetteville Youth Council. She's in the audience there. If everybody could give her a hand, she has done great things with our children.
Crystal, stand up. Stand up. She loves the attention. Let's give her another round of applause.
She has traveled all over the United States with these children, giving them opportunities that they would never have if it wasn't for her and her leadership, and has taught these children how to be leaders. They come in in the 10th grade shy, not able to say much of anything, boo. And by the time they're seniors, we can't shut them up half the time. And they want to go everywhere and anywhere. So she's made a huge, huge difference in our community. I'm going to be quick. I'm just going to say a little bit and then I'm going to change it over to Rebecca. But right here, we are having our Glow Fest. It's a 5K run. It's our second annual Glow Fest. It's the only fundraiser that our Cumberland Fayetteville Youth Council does. If you go on Facebook or you go on YouTube, you will see a video that our children have done themselves and that they are going out by themselves trying to get sponsors, trying to get runners. They are adult-led, but they are really doing a lot of the work themselves. So if you can support them just by coming out and cheering, that would be great. I do want to introduce Rebecca over here. She has great accolades to share with you. She is the Chairman of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council and she is on the State Board, which I think you are the Chairman of that, too. First one from Fayetteville ever, so Rebecca.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jensen. The Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council is really a great opportunity for youth to really be and spark the change in the community. We work with the city council and the county commissioners. It's a cross-generational link. And so, yes, this is our fundraiser. We want to get as many runners as possible. I have flyers, so if you are interested, please come and see me. So, yes, thank you for having me here.
Rebecca, can you tell them a little bit about yourself, where you go to school?
Oh, yes. I am a senior at 71st High School.
Can I be a senior member on the youth council?
I think you already have that position, Mr. Chris. They love you.
And at this time, I'd like to recognize my friends in the audience. If y'all will come up, the Buffalo Soldiers.
Mr. Mayor, I already briefed them a couple of weeks ago.
Did y'all ride tonight?
No, sir.
Okay, all right.
Me neither.
Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is James Lothar. I'm with the Buffalo Soldiers Motorcycle Club of North Carolina. For the past two years, we were invited to participate in Run for the Wall, which is a great organization that remembers veterans past and present. They start in California and ride to Washington, DC. They come through here. That's where the mayor comes in. The mayor has been instrumental in ensuring that this event has done an outstanding job for Fayetteville. It's brought a lot of attention and it's done a lot of things to make this event great. So, our President, Mr. William Johnson. Vice President, Chief Burnside. Second Vice President, William Judd. And on behalf of the rest of our members, we would like to present the mayor with a special appreciation for all of his hard work ensuring that this event takes place each year. So, Mr. Mayor, we thank you and continue your success. He rode with us.
Yeah, there are hours of work, but let me tell you, it's fun to ride a motorcycle. So it was more of a pleasure than it was work. You guys are awesome. Thank you.
Buffalo!
Soldiers!
Buffalo!
Soldiers!
Buffalo!
Soldiers!
And it's all good.
For those of you that ride who have never ridden in a group, there's not a better group to ride with than the Buffalo Soldiers. Let me tell you, they are careful on the street and when I start to cut up, they yank me right back in line. So appreciate y'all. Ride safe. At this time, Mr. Bill Pollitt, if you would come forward with the Fayetteville Master Gardeners program.
Or Bob Fox. Oh, there's... No. Yeah. Yep.
Let me read this little piece about what you got here. Each year, eight to 12 of the Master Gardeners are trained on the assessment program and go out on eight acres of the city. Forty-two sub-areas, plus the MLK and All-American, total about 65 miles of roadside, and mark their scores. The average scale is submitted to Rebecca Carter, who is our data person here. For a quantitative measure for a goal, this assessment tool is used in the application for Keep America Beautiful. And add what you like.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, if I may add to that, as Chair of Fayetteville Beautiful. And Bob, if you can just go up to the microphone, I'm going to have you say a few words and introduce the Master Gardeners that are here tonight. We officially kicked off Fayetteville Beautiful on September 6th, 2006. But before we did that, we did a litter index assessment score, which we stole, which was okay by them, Keep America Beautiful. But unlike most Keep America Beautiful affiliates throughout North Carolina and actually the country, we wanted to make it pretty accurate. So instead of 10, 12, 15 miles, we circled around eight municipal high schools and the MLK and the All-American totaling 64.6 or 65 miles. And so the Master Gardeners took over this assessment, this work, in 2011. But George Quigley, under his leadership, and a team of about eight, Master Gardeners 12 to 15, they took it over at that. This provides valuable information, not only to a quantitative measurement of our litter index throughout the city, but also we assess what the litter is, where the litter comes from, how we can eradicate that litter in that particular location. And with the chief here tonight, something I'd like to say is along the MLK and All-American, as you're looking for speeders, a lot of that type of trash is blown out of trucks. We have a... Some of the things Keep America Beautiful passed was receptacles, which we used not to have, trash receptacles at fast foods and quick stops and everything like that. We now have them there. And covered truck law ordinance. We now have that, thanks to the work of Fayetteville Beautiful. So we need police to help us with the stick because we've got great volunteers that clean up and great volunteers that measure our litter, but we don't have the enforcement so people feel like they can just trash the city. And we were, when we had that assessment, at 2.95, in the top seven trashiest cities in the state of North Carolina. We have lowered it every year, except for this year. We've lowered it every year and we're not even in the top 25. We are now currently at 2.08. So it's the work for the Master Gardeners. Thank you so much for your hard work in providing that score for the city of Fayetteville. Bob, take it away.
You're most welcome and I thank you very much. A lot of the success of the Master Gardeners in this program is due to Bill Pollitt and George Quigley, known as Scrooge to a lot of people downtown. And he is laid up right now and he can't get here either. But we do appreciate it and we are the Cumberland County Master Gardeners and we're here to service Fayetteville and Cumberland County and we enjoy it. And we're looking for more if anybody wants to join us.
What's your next plant sale? You got one coming up?
Yes, sir. We have one coming up in early October.
And you have your members here?
I've got Ms. Judy DeWong and she is it. We had others coming and they did not make it.
Okay. I recall her name on there. But on behalf of the mayor, the Fayetteville City Council, and Fayetteville Beautiful and our 2,000-some-odd members, we appreciate it so much. This is for you. Thank you for your hard work. Appreciate it much. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, let's get Assistant City Manager Jay Reinstein to come down and tell us a little something about our STEM interns for 2017.
Great, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Again, this year's STEM internship program, we were able to hire 10 youth thanks to city council sponsorship. PWC was also able to hire 10 youth and we also had one private sector hire. Next year, we're going to work closer with the Chamber of Commerce so that we can bring on more youth to work in our private sector. The city interns work this year in seven city departments, HRD, IT, Public Services, Finance, Transit, and the Airport, that actually may be six. And I was really very pleased to hear some of the comments that we got this year from directors and from other middle managers within the organization where we brought on an intern, how happy they were with the experience. They want more interns next year. So the hope is that we can continue to grow this program. The other thing I would say, as well as we have this year some of the recipients of our Certificate of Excellence that we're going to be giving to our interns. The mayor is going to be reading out the names. We also have a couple of people here from PWC and we're going to recognize those two students as well. So if the mayor could come up and... Where are the certificates? They're right here. And if you'd like to call up the folks and we'll have them... Does that work for you?
Johnny Smith?
Do you want me to call and then you?
Nope. Is this Ms. Fuller Cross? Shamira? Shamira Fuller Cross? Are we presenting, shaking hands and taking pictures? Or what are we doing?
Is Gavin here to take a picture? If not, we can...
Just turn around, smile for the audience. Tell us something about yourself. Where do you go to school?
I live at Terry Sanford High School. I'm a senior this year and I really enjoy the experience in HRD. And I'm planning in my future to come back and become full-time.
Awesome. Awesome. We're ready for you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Shamira. Emmanuel Boite? Was I close on the last name? Boite.
Close.
Close. Thank you so much for your service. Where do you go to school?
Jack Britt.
Okay. Turn around, tell everybody. Where do you go to school?
I go to Jack Britt High School.
What grade are you in?
I'm going to be a senior.
Okay. Senior, Jack Britt. You're the Buccaneers, right? You play any sports?
No.
No? All right. Work hard, be smart. Thank you so much for doing this.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Danisha Connor. Hey, Ms. Connor. Thank you so much for helping us out. Where do you go to school?
71st.
What grade?
I'm in 12.
All right. And tell us about your summer. Did you have a good time doing this?
I enjoyed working at Fast. I really enjoyed it. It showed me, it basically opened my eyes to having that as my first job and seeing everything that they do.
Did you get to drive a bus?
No. No.
No? Thank you so much for joining us this summer.
Thank you.
You wanna announce that one?
Sure, David James, come on down. Boat tie and everything.
You're looking good in that boat, sir. Where do you go to school?
I go to Jack Britt.
Jack Britt, Buccaneers.
Yeah, I'm a senior.
All right. What do you want to do next year?
Uh, go to college and major in computer engineering.
Great, very good. And what department were you in?
Engineering.
Engineering, there you go. Thank you, David.
Nice job.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Turn around so everybody can see that smile, how pretty. Where do you go to school?
EE Smith.
Oh, Golden Bulls.
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm talking about, yeah? What grade?
I'm a senior.
You're a rising senior as well.
Yes, sir.
And what department were you in with the city?
I was at finance and the collections.
Okay. Did you get to wear like big horn-rimmed glasses and stuff while you were down there?
I already had glasses.
Okay. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Amari Littleton. How are you?
Fine.
Good. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
What department were you in?
Parks and Rec.
Oh, that was fun, huh?
Yes.
Were you here in the hot months?
Yes.
Yeah, that may be not so much fun. Uh, where do you go to school?
Douglasburg.
Okay, a senior?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, thank you so much for joining us this year.
Thank you.
Nora Brantley.
So, Nori, we want to recognize Nori, who is the coordinator of the program for Cumberland County Schools with a Certificate of Excellence. We appreciate it, Nori.
And Nori, where did you go to school?
I went to Wade Ross. Back when it was a regular old high school.
You wanna talk about the program and our partnership with the school system?
Definitely. Like I said, we've made it very clear that we are very grateful for this opportunity. Work-based learning opportunities for our students is so valuable to them. It's been a great group, we've had great partners, and we're excited about it growing and continuing next year.
And us too.
Definitely. So, if you're in the private sector and you'd like an intern for next summer, call me.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren is not here. I will accept it on Lauren's behalf.
You're not gonna ask me what school I go to or anything. Okay, put that aside.
And Bryce Matthews. Mr. Matthews here? Nope.
Bryce is not here.
That was the winning lottery ticket too.
And we have one more, Mr. Mayor.
Andrea Tribb. Tribb?
Andrea Tebbey, from our office. That was a joke, of course.
Is that her?
Yes. And again, Andrea was really the glue that held this program together, so I wanted to recognize her for all of her efforts.
And where does she work?
And she is in the city manager's office.
What does she do every day?
She's an administrative assistant and she is the best.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
And she never leaves her desk.
And if I can too, have two PWC students that happen to be here this evening stand up to be recognized, Jamie Barton and Rebecca Mitchell. And Rebecca's over here.
So, we heard from Rebecca, where do you go to school?
Seventy-first.
Senior?
Yes.
Great, what are you doing next year?
Um, I'm probably gonna come back to PWC because we have an accounting department.
Awesome. Awesome.
And before I close, just two things. I think that this program has been terrific. We've been able to bring on some great young people, but our hope is, is after they go to school, they come back to Fayetteville and work. We've exposed them to local government, some great things, and we hope that they have an interest to actually coming back here. Again, special thanks also to Councilmember Wright and Councilmember Devier. They were a great help during this process as well, so thank everyone. Appreciate it.
Stand up, Ms. Evans? Where do you go to school?
EE Smith.
Oh, if I'd have known that, you'd have been up front.
I suppose she had a fortune.
And which department were you in?
I was at PWC.
Okay, at PWC, all right. Which department?
Meters.
Meters. Okay. All right. Great. Good.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate your support, council.
And we'll get your certificate to you. Okay, thank you. All right, council, down to business. Item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Wright, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Colvin. Is there discussion on the motion?
All right, you just count my votes.
All right, sing none, council, I'll ask for your vote, please. That's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Council, 6.0 is the consent agenda. There are a couple of items that I'd like the city manager to talk about, this item 6.03 and 6.09. Is there anything else to be pulled? All right, sing none, council, I'll ask for a motion.
So moved, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve.
Was that Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Crisp. Is there discussion? All right, sing none, council, I'll ask for your vote. That's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Hewitt, tell us some good news about item 6.03 and 6.09, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy City Manager Christoph Bauer will walk us through 6.03 and 6.09. Thank you.
Did I shrink? This thing's a little tall today. Good evening, Shrunk, it was, the water was a little dry. Thank you this evening, council. 6.03 is Amendment to Chapter 23 Stormwater Management, allowing greenways within the stream buffer. This is in relation to a design project for Big Cross Creek Trail. We have an $800,000 grant through FAMPO, the Fayetteville Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, to do that design project. And we found that if we could actually put the greenway within the wetland buffer area, that that would allow us to reduce the impact on adjacent property owners and still put in a trail that was sensitive to that environment. So, that's why we're asking for that change tonight so we can move forward with designing that project and then go start seeking funding to develop that trail over the future years. Are there any other questions? I'll do my best to answer them.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to share the good news. Mr. Manager?
Do you want to take action on that item and then we can move on to the next one?
Yeah, since that was pulled, thank you, Mr. Bauer. Council, I'll ask for a motion to approve 6.03.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Moon.
Okay.
Seconded by Mr. McDougal. Any discussion? Sing none, council, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. More good news. Item 6.09, Mr. Bauer.
6.09 is adoption of a capital project ordinance amendment to provide some funding for Owen Drive sidewalk project and right-of-way acquisition. This has some federal funds and because of that, we had to follow federal guidelines for the acquisition of right-of-way, which had some stricter standards, which increased the cost of right-of-way acquisition. Because of that, we had to come to council tonight to ask for this amendment to provide some additional funding in order to complete the project.
And what's the funding for?
It's for sidewalks, for right-of-way acquisition for our sidewalk installation.
From where to where?
Now you've exceeded my knowledge.
The sidewalk installation will take place from Walter Reed all the way to 301.
So, from the hospital all the way out Owen Drive to 301?
Yes, sir.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's a lot of sidewalk. All right, council, I'll entertain a motion for 6.09.
Move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Crisp. Okay, Mr. Hurst. All right, discussion? Mr. Devier? All right, sing none, council, I'll ask for your vote, please. All right, that's unanimous, Madam Clerk. 7.0 is the public hearing, or public forum, I'm sorry. The public forum is a time that Fayetteville residents may have an input and a voice of what goes on within the city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will last no longer than thirty minutes. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, which works out pretty good because we have ten speakers, to address the city council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville only. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you're here to also speak on an item, or if you're here to speak on an item on tonight's agenda, under the public hearings, which is the next item actually, we ask that you reserve your comments until the public hearing. So, when you hear your name called by the city clerk, we ask that you please come to the podium, clearly state your name and home address for the record. When you see the light located on the podium change from green to yellow, that's an indication that you have thirty seconds left to speak. When you see the red light come on, your time has expired. And again, due to policy restrictions, we're unable to extend that time. So, what that basically means, you have three minutes to speak. So, with that being said, Madam Clerk, call the first speaker.
Mayor, our first speaker is Ms. Bunny English.
Welcome, Ms. English.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Bunny English. I live at 729 Hillsborough Street here in Fayetteville, and a family member has recently purchased a home in Lockloman. And I was very thrilled about this, to have this family member move to Fayetteville. It's a cute little house, very, very adorable, but there was no fence across the front yard and they wanted puppies. When my oldest son applied for a permit to put a fence across the front yard, he was told that he had to get either a Roth iron fence or the fence that looks like Venetian blinds or a Roth iron fence look-alike. Well, he picked the Roth iron fence look-alike that totaled $1,500, including installation. In this day and age, $1,500 could do an awful lot of good for anybody, even if you are older. It's too late for us now. Can I pass this around? Start here? Okay.
Yes, ma'am. If you'll just give it to the clerk, she'll pass it.
It's been already installed, $1,500 is gone, they're not coming back. And I was rather surprised to find that in the South, of all things, chain-length fence has been banned. It clearly states on the paper, given to my son from City Hall, that chain-length fences are not allowed anymore. And the chain-linked people aren't happy about that because I called them and told them. Anyway, I was hoping that you would find a way and that you would repeal this little law, because if we could have, it would have only cost us $485 total to put a fence from the left side of the property to the right side of the property, because there are fences running down both sides of the property. Fayetteville's getting big and Roth iron does not speak to Fayetteville, okay? We are not Roth iron. We're Roth iron around the cemetery, we're Roth iron around very historical areas that are open from nine in the morning to five in the afternoon, but it's not a house. It does not make a house look pretty. It's very distracting and it's just downright ugly. So, I need this repealed. It's not gonna do any good. The $1,500 is gone, city council members, and it's never, ever coming back. Thank you. But for somebody else, it's gonna save, okay? If you can repeal it and let us have our chain-length fences back. Oh, please.
Thank you, Ms. English.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Christine Michaels.
Good evening, everyone. Christine Michaels, Greater Fayetteville Chamber of Commerce, 159 Maxwell Street. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Greater Fayetteville Chamber of Commerce and its Government Affairs Committee in support of the city adopting what is known as the Brunch Bill. This summer, we signed on with a statewide coalition in support of the bill to enable our local governments to allow alcohol sales by restaurants, breweries, bars, grocery stores, and other retailers as early as 10:00 AM on Sundays. It's estimated that North Carolina's restaurants could each earn an additional $25,000 in taxable revenue per year by the passage of this legislation. If passed, Fayetteville will be joining the following, more than sixty other municipalities, in allowing earlier alcohol sales. And I won't read them all to you, they're on the sheet that was provided to you, but it does include places such as Asheville, Chapel Hill, Charlotte, and Raleigh. Not only would the Brunch Bill allow us to better serve locals, but visitors to our state would also be able to have the same offerings on Sunday mornings as they do in most other states. Think of weddings, vacations, and other celebrations where visitors want to enjoy a celebratory drink with friends and family during these joyous occasions. Allowing two extra hours for serving alcohol can help restaurants meet customer demands, grow business, create jobs, increase tax revenue, and bring business patrons into the districts earlier in the day. It may encourage places to start serving brunch. And to meet those needs, the industry will need more servers, cooks, and will provide more jobs to local coffers. For these reasons, we do ask you to vote in support of this measure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Tom Clark.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilman. I live in Cumberland County, 4643 Goldsboro Road, Wade, North Carolina, but Cumberland County is Fayetteville and Fayetteville's Cumberland County. And what I'm here tonight to speak about is Atlantic Coast Pipeline. It's a large gas, natural gas pipeline, thirty-six inches, that's gonna be coming from West Virginia, fracking fields of West Virginia, through the heartlands of Virginia, Appalachian Mountains, and eastern North Carolina. There's a lot that we've been hearing about the Atlantic Coast Pipeline, but there's a lot that we're not hearing about it also. The people that it's affecting are the ones that are speaking up, don't want it. The people that it's not affecting are the ones that seem like, well, let's go ahead and bring it in. But anyway, I got a few facts here I'd like to say. It's an economic consulting group that was commissioned by Dominion themselves stating about the jobs. This report is titled, "Economic Impact of the ACP in West Virginia, Virginia, and North Carolina," that this pipeline would only provide eighteen permanent jobs for our area. Now, the other jobs they're talking about are the highly specialized jobs as far as installing these large pipelines. And they will move along with the pipeline. Another fact is that the estimated cost of a connection on the proposed ACP is between 500,000 and 1 million. If the county or municipality does not already have natural gas infrastructure in place, the cost of a TAP for a company or business to hook on would be well over $5 million. Dominion clearly states in its TAP policy that it- that it would not be willing to consider any TAPs requested under ten thousand BTUs per day. Another thing that I'd like to say is, in the county, a lot of our water out there, it's not like city water, it's not community water, it's whales. And we're very concerned that when this pipeline comes through, all the construction's going to interfere with our water. This pipeline's going to go under the Cape Fear River several times. It's going under every major river and stream in eastern North Carolina. A thirty-six-inch diameter pipeline would have initially the capacity of one point five billion cubic feet of natural gas coming through our county each day. And Dominion's got a, I guess you could just call it a safety check valve, but they only would go off if it's a two percent or greater leak. Now, when you're living next door to one point five billion cubic feet of natural gas coming through your backyard, two percent of that gas is a lot when it's involving your family's safety. And all I'm asking you tonight is, as a city, which I said Fayetteville is Cumberland County and Cumberland County is Fayetteville, just consider that very much.
Thank you, sir. And so folks aren't misled or have the correct information, the pipeline actually does not go into the city limits of the city of Fayetteville? Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
I don't know if it was coming through Fayetteville one time, but it has been moved.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Ann Schrader.
Hello and welcome.
Hello. Thank you. My name's Ann Schrader. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. As my friend Tom mentioned, I am vehemently opposed to the proposed Duke Energy's Atlantic Coast Pipeline. It's hard to talk about this in three minutes, but this is a, one of the largest fossil fuel pipelines in the United States, and also the most, one of the most expensive, five point one billion, six hundred miles long, coming from Pennsylvania through Ohio, West Virginia, Virginia, and a greater amount of North Carolina. They are poised to clearcut a significant amount, six hundred acres of Blue Ridge Parkway pristine forest, and also dynamite, and traverse through five hundred and sixty wetlands, rivers, and streams.
Ms. Schrader, let me, I'm sorry, would you please state your name again and address for the record?
My name is Ann Schrader. I live at two two three Sedmond Street, and I live right up in historical Haymount. This pipeline is not needed. Duke, Duke Energy has not proven that this fossil fuel pipeline is needed. We are already a leader in the nation in North Carolina in renewable energy alongside California. When you consider what we are globally being faced with right now in climate change and global warming and environmental degradation, now is not the time to say yes to another fossil fuel pipeline. Fossil fuel pipelines are one of the leading causes of global warming. They leak, they toxify our waterways and our drinking water. Duke Energy is one of the significant partners of this pipeline, and Duke Energy has already polluted our Cape Fear River and Lumber River with coal ash. Now is not the time to say yes to Duke Energy. Now is the time to say no to polluting our waterways, no to harming our environment. Now is the time to say yes to renewable energy. We are already leaders in the nation in renewable energy. And if not now, when? We owe it to our grandchildren. We must protect this environment. We must protect our water. We must protect our air. We need these things to survive. It makes, it's insanity to approve another fossil fuel pipeline when it is not needed and they want us to pay for it. And we are still paying for the coal ash dump in the Cape Fear River. This causes global warming and climate change, and I know because my family was impacted by Hurricane Matthew last year. And we are still paying for it. So when they tout that this is good for the economy, when you weigh one year of construction jobs for this pipeline, and thirty years being stuck independent upon this pipeline, and also the pipeline contributing to environmental catastrophes, it's obvious how this affects our economy. It makes more sense to go into renewable energy that produces jobs and does not harm our environment. I am vehemently opposed to this pipeline. It is not needed. It is not funny. It is serious. We only have one planet, and we are killing our planet. Thank you.
Thank you. Or is there anyone else here to speak about the pipeline? All right, this chair will not recognize anyone else about the pipeline. We've had two speakers, but the rules, and I gave you some lenience, but the rules state that it be on a city issue related to the city of Fayetteville, and the pipeline does not come through the city of Fayetteville, does not touch our city limits. Unless they reroute the pipeline, we're going to close the discussion on the pipeline. Okay. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Iman Mohammed.
With the name of God, the beneficent and merciful, I greet you all in peace, A'is salaam alaikum, which is stated around the world. I am Imam Iranami Smith Mohammed, Vietnam Vet. Also the founder of the Fayetteville Muslim Community. You can reach me at twenty-seven hundred Murchison Road.
Can't hear you, Senator. Speak up.
I'm trying not to scream at you, Matt. I say you can reach me at twenty-seven hundred Murchison Road. Many of you all know me very, very well. I've been coming here for like thirty-five years, long before that young man got out of high school. That's right. Okay, listen up. Only got two minutes. All right. The month of Ramadan, brothers and sisters, was fantastic. It brought Muslim Christians and Jews together at the Masjid Oma Ibn Sa'id on Murchison Road. It also brought Muslims from around the world, including the prince from Saudi Arabia that I met personally, with his name tag on his chest being trained at Fort Bragg to fly jet airplanes. Next on the agenda, I did make the North Carolina State Legislative Black Caucus luncheon and banquet, and historical Black College and University's forum and town hall meeting, and Research Triangle Park at the end of Ramadan. And I spoke to them all. Matter of fact, I took over the discussion on historical Black College and University, and let them know Iran Mohammed, yes, and my Legislative Black Caucus friends helped me bring in five billion dollars to Fort Bragg in this area in the past five years. Next on the agenda, the baseball stadium must be completed and on the move quickly, Nat Roberts and Brother Coven. Next on the agenda, this is part of my work downtown economic development, as many of you all very well know, for twenty-five years developing all this stuff you see downtown. John Miles Home would verify that. He's a Fayetteville State Bronco like myself. The transportation hub must be open by this weekend. Anyone who stands in the way, you're wrong. The North Carolina Legislative Black Caucus and our friends in the legislature want it open. We didn't fight like crazy and bring in John Keith on the county commission to help get that thing started. Need to get these people out of the heat, care about others and not just ourselves. Next, Fayetteville State University has a hundred and fifty years of celebration this year. We're recruiting alumni members around the world, bringing them to Fayetteville State University in October. Anyone who's been to Fayetteville State, got ancestors who went to Fayetteville State, like my grandfather, you need to be a part of this celebration. And I'll be a part of the discussion and the putting, organizing that with Chancellor Willis-McLeod and Dr. Jesse Williams. Next on the agenda, downtown at the Cape Fear River. The river needs boats on that river, like Harvard University on the Charles River. We want some boats on that river, fix it up, and let the people go and celebrate. We are not, you know, we are not outsiders. We know how to be sophisticated and get that done. Clearly, the, next on the agenda, the Legislative Black Caucus gave this message to you. Do all that you can do in your, in your local areas, then come to them. Don't come to them unless you've done all you can do, and come with Iran Mohammed, since that's my team. They're the ones who assist me. Also, the Lieutenant of Gov. is a good friend of mine as well. What you heard about the police chief, welcome. The Fayetteville Observer-
All right, Senator, thank you.
Okay, the Fayetteville Observer ninety-three, ninety-four, got ten solutions for the police chief.
Councilmember Arp's working on the boats for you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Jerry Reinhold.
Mr. Reinhold, please remember to state your address, Dear Path Lane.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jerry Reinhold, five sixteen Deerpath Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina. Tonight I come before you, this is almost sort of a public service announcement. Once in a lifetime, next Monday afternoon, we're going to experience a partial solar eclipse. And one of the things that I've been concerned about is, I think this is really going to be a big deal, is I don't see any public service announcements in terms of public safety or concerns by either the Fayetteville Police Department, the city government on their website, or the Fayetteville Police Department, and perhaps in terms of protection that citizens need to take before observing the, the partial eclipse which is going to occur here in Fayetteville. I just want to remind that next Tuesday afternoon, this process will last for about four hours, and there will be no time here that you will be able to look safely at the sun, even at the point of maximum darkness, which will be about ninety-six percent of the sun blacked out. And there's the information in terms of Fayetteville, when the coverage is going to be here. This is also available on websites and so on and so forth. That everybody who wants to look at the sun, they need to wear glasses that are specially designed for, you know, for that purpose. Regular ray bands and sunglasses are not going to get the job done. If you, if you use that type of eye protection for this, for viewing the sun, you're going to wind up in the emergency room, and you could wind up losing your sight or having severe eye damage. But it's just not the eyes that are to be, that you need to be concerned about. Things like cameras, binoculars, and other optical instruments also need to have special solar filters to protect the optics inside the camera, and obviously the eyes behind it if you're looking in binoculars. This is going to be a once-in-a-lifetime event for, for all of us. And I just hope that everybody enjoys the solar eclipse, and that they, they behave responsibly and safely, and that everything works out fine for everybody in the, in the community. It's a, this is going to be a great deal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our next speaker is Pastor Blandon.
Welcome, Pastor.
How you doing, Mr. Mayor?
Good, sir. Hope you are.
I'm Pastor Blandon, and I live at twenty-two thirty-seven Calista Circle. I want to thank you, Mayor, as well as the city council, for this opportunity to speak to you about a great day on the second Sunday of September, which is September the sixth. We call it Appreciation Sunday. Appreciation Sunday this year is going to recognize and honor the service and sacrifice of educators in our community. Every year, we honor a component of our community. Last year, we honored the law enforcement of our community. I was told by the chief that we were the only church in our community that honored law enforcement on that day. I only mention that because I don't want to be the only church this year that honors educators in our community. Our church is only so big, and we can only bring in so many people. We will be honoring ten nominated educators. They will get gift certificates, they will get certificates of appreciation. Every other educator that we recognize that we get their data before church, we will give them a certificate of recognition. If they have not been, data has not been gotten before church, and they're in our church service that day, we will get their data, and we will send it to them or bring them back the next week to honor them. The vision is to launch an organized and unified community outreach. There's a lot being talked about community, unity in our community. I would like a community of churches to join me in honoring these educators, business owners, or anyone else. Our mission is to positively impact the community, showing appreciation to educators so that nationwide millions will be honored. But here in Fayetteville, we would like to see thousands honored. If just ten churches honored ten nominated educators, that would be one hundred. But you add ten every time, and that will go up. Our goal is to build a stronger community through appreciation and participation. I believe God wants to bring our community together, but in doing so, we have to honor and value those that are sacrificing. And I've served in life skills education in our community, and I want us to understand these teachers need support, they need help, and these students need help and support. Our keynote speaker is going to be the seventy-first president, I mean, Principal Myron Williams. Our other keynote speaker would be Tony Jones, who is a minister in our church who has degrees in education as well as curriculum development. I invite the mayor, and he is almost committed, so I'm not going to say officially, but I invite all the council members that don't have church that day, and the council member that's a pastor, I invite you to join us in honoring the educators that serve our great city. God bless you.
Pastor, one more time, the name of the church and the address.
Uh, pastor, excuse, the name of the church, Antioch Bible Fellowship Ministries. We're located at sixty-eight twenty-nine Fill Yar Road.
And where is Fill Yar Road?
Fill Yar Road is right outside the gate of Fort Bragg, off of Yakkin Road. You can't miss it. We're right behind the, the BP, I mean, excuse me, the Shell Gas Station right there, right in that mall. We have a couple of buildings there. And you can't miss, as soon as you turn left off of Yakkin Road to Fill Yar, make an immediate left in that parking lot, and we'll be right there waiting on you.
What time is your service?
The service starts at eleven AM.
Okay. Mr. McDougal?
You got me.
You got it?
I was asking for the time.
Thank you very much.
God bless you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Charles Matthews.
Welcome, Mr. Matthews.
Honorable Mayor and the rest of the city council, it's great to see your smiling faces again. I kind of miss you that one month off.
Glad you're back.
Yeah. The city of Fayetteville need a water reservoir to help control the flow of water in Big Cross Creek. Rosie Lake was the reservoir before it was breached. Without Rosie Lake Dam, Hurricane Matthew had a free flow of water in Big Cross Creek and caused major damage downtown. We would like for the city to replace Rosie Lake Dam with funds from FEMA, then collect the funds from each property owner their fair share to pay it back. I know that they are digging some holes downtown, right next to Vic's Drive-In, and they're putting an overpass and so on. And they, and they got an area at the park that they say also would control some of the water flow. But that's downtown. Many homes would be flooded out before the water get downtown if another hurricane come through like Hurricane Matthew. And I'm sure we have got something on the way. So I would appreciate it if there's some kind of way we can get the funds from FEMA, although this is indirectly, but it is the cause of the flooding downtown. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Mayor, our next speaker is Larissa Witt.
Welcome, Ms. Witt. Long time no see.
Good evening. It's nice to see everyone. I just want to give a quick little commercial about hope for North Carolina. There's been a lot of discussion tonight about the situation with Hurricane Matthew. And as you know, we have a lot of families who are still displaced and still in need. And so FEMA, through SAMSA, has provided crisis counseling for those affected by Hurricane Matthew. We have done five thousand contacts so far, and we have about another ten thousand to do. And we are going house to house. I have ten teams, I have ten case man, crisis counselors, five teams that are going throughout the community, door to door, checking on families. And we are doing an emotional pulse, how are they doing? So we just want to get that information out, that we're here, it's available. All they need to do is contact one phone number. We have a hotline number. It is a nine-one-nine number because we're with Alliance Behavioral Health. And it is nine-one-nine four-zero-seven twenty-nine forty-two. And anyone who calls that number, we will send a team out to go and check on families to see how they're doing. If they, we deem that they need more behavioral health services, I work for Alliance at seven-eleven Executive Place, and we connect them to Alliance Behavioral Health Services. And that number is also a one-stop-shop number in our community, and that's an eight-hundred number, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, they can call that number and talk to a licensed clinician. And the number is eight-hundred five-one-zero ninety-one thirty-two. A lot of people ask how they access behavioral health in our community, and we make it very simple, one number. So that's all I have. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Witt.
Mayor, I did have one additional person that has signed on the sign-up sheet, but unfortunately, I cannot read the signature.
If you had signed up on the sheet to speak at the public forum and your name has not been called, please identify yourself. Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll close the public forum.
Thank you, sir.
This time, we'll move to public hearings. We do have two public hearings tonight. The first one is eight-point-zero-one, and before we start that item, a couple of announcements. The petitioner for the rezoning has sent a letter at a little bit after two o'clock today that asks that that item be postponed or pulled off the agenda. However, since the public hearing had already been advertised and noticed by law, the city council has decided that we wanted to hear from the people that may have shown up for that item. So what I will do is ask Mr. Harmon to give a background on the item. We will open the public hearing. I will read the rules to you, and then we will continue the public hearing till later date. So we will not close the public hearing this evening. That being said, Mr. Harmon.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The property in question, well, the case number is P-1709F, and this is a rezoning request to go from SF-10, single-family, to an LC, limited commercial district. Property is located at seventy-three seventy-six Stony Point Road, right at the intersection of Stony Point and Dundal. And we do have an appeal that was filed on this right after the zoning commission heard this case as well. Again, just to give you an idea of where the property is located, is in the northeast corner there of Dundal and Stony Point. Gates Four Country Club is just here outside of your five-hundred-foot circle. You've got a little convenience store that sits here on the southeast corner of that same intersection. And as you can see, most of the other properties in that area are either undeveloped, as we have a few large tracts are undeveloped, or developed residentially. This particular property, most of it is undeveloped. There's a house on the part down here in the yellow. As I said a while ago, most single-family residential around here with a few exceptions, with a few mobile homes and a couple of little business properties. Our land use plan also calls for this whole area to be in low-density residential as well. And this map just gives you kind of a background because the, what the applicant is looking to do is put a grocery store on this property, and this is just kind of a two- and three-mile radius out from the site showing existing grocery stores, which would be the ones in green. And then the two here in kind of a pink color are ones that have already gone through the zoning process, but nothing's been built. The one out here in pink is in development review at the moment. And then the red one here is an existing building that used to be a food line that Food Line has moved out of on Fisher Road. Just to give you an idea of what the properties look like, this is the home in question that's on the smaller piece. This is looking at the larger piece with the wood line back there at the intersection.
Mr. Harmon, let me interrupt you for just one minute if I can. There's been some discussion up here. Madam Attorney, are we allowed to consider what goes on this property?
The only reason that I mention that is that was brought up by the applicant during the zoning commission. It's not something that you-
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. Ms. McDonald, are we allowed to consider what goes on this property?
No, you need to consider all the uses that could be a part of that particular rezoning classification.
Thank you.
This is the small convenience store that's there at the southeast corner of this intersection. Behind the convenience store back in here is a dog kennel. The kennel's actually zoned residential, agricultural. And then this is the opposite corner of the property, or that intersection, another vacant piece. Both this piece and the two pieces in question over the last few years have gone through requests about four or five times for rezoning and have all been turned down by city council during those processes.
How long has the property owner owned this property?
I'm not sure how long that particular property owner-
They've owned it since nineteen ninety-three?
I knew that they were the same owner, at least in two thousand nine, when I was here and it came through the last time.
Mr. Harmon, in nineteen ninety-three, what was the development like out there? You think they bought this property to speculate on turning it commercial?
I would doubt that that long ago they probably did. I mean, that was a very rural area. I mean, it's still fairly rural out there, but it was very rural at that point.
Thank you.
The zoning commission did recommend approval on a two-to-three vote. They based that on the property being located in a developing area of the city, that there are other smaller commercial properties located in the general area, and that new residential development in the, in this area of the city and in the county's jurisdiction, they felt warranted additional commercial development. Staff, on the other hand, had recommended denial, that being because it is mainly surrounded by low-density residential currently. The land use plan calls for low-density residential as well. Currently, and they may be able to bring it to the property, but currently, the property is not served by PWC Sewer. The 2030 Growth Vision Plan also has several policies that are included in your packet that we thought were very important to this rezoning as well. The rural nature of the location and its proximity to a larger commercial area just a mile to the east that's fairly new, where the Harris Teeter and Food Line exists now. And we didn't really see much change in circumstances since the property was denied for rezoning in two thousand nine. Are there any questions of staff before you open your public hearing?
I see no lights. Thank you, Mr. Harmon. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Individuals desiring to speak at tonight's public hearing should have signed up with the city clerk to address the council prior to seven PM. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue of the public hearing. Individuals wishing to speak will be limited to three minutes unless you have previously arranged to have one designated speaker. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and clearly state your name and address for the council. When you see the lights change on the podium from green to yellow, that's an indication that you have thirty seconds left to speak. When the red light comes on, your time has expired. And again, due to policy restrictions, they will not be able to extend your time, but council members recognized by this seat may direct questions to any of the speakers at any time. So what we will do tonight is we will abide by these rules as stated. When and if the public hearing is extended to another night upon bringing the issue back, we will again offer time for resident input. However, if you sign up tonight to speak, you're going to be limited next time and not be able to speak. So this is, it's a continuation of the same hearing, so you can only sign up to speak at one hearing. Okay. With that being said, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we have five people signed up in favor and one person signed up in opposition. The first person for the item is Mr. James Cooper.
Okay. Hang on, Mr. Charleston, I'll ask you to come in the microphone and repeat that. If you are signed up to speak tonight but wish to delay until the next meeting, if there is one, then you can simply, we'll put you on the list to speak at the next public hearing, so you don't have to speak tonight if you don't want to. Mr. Charleston, come to the microphone, please, and repeat what you'd said about Mr. Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Please limit your remarks to Mr. Cooper.
Jim Cooper, who's an attorney and a former fighter pilot in Fayetteville. Let's come up, Jim. He's going to defer his time to me, you can tell.
Thank you.
It's an honor for me to appear before Mr. Mayor and the city council. I've appeared many times before, but not recently.
Give me your address real fast, Mr. Cooper.
My address?
Yes, sir.
Thirty-four twelve Milba Drive, Fayetteville, two-eight-three-one-one.
Thank you. Welcome back, sir.
Thank you, sir. I want to recognize Ms. Hossie Burns, the owner of the property that's, I've been representing her for many years, and I just want you to know she's here, very much interested. But I want to tell you this, that I am hearing impaired, that I could not understand Mr. Harmon, and I do not feel that I can adequately represent Mrs. Burns. So I have engaged Attorney Jonathan Charleston, whom, for whom I have great respect and great confidence, to present the arguments. In my stead, I would like to give to the mayor a microphone that transmits directly to my hearing aid, and maybe I can hear what you say.
And I won't sing, I promise. Mr. Charleston.
Thank you. I think there are a few other members that have signed up from the ownership group, Hossie Burns, and her son signed up as well, and I think they're going to defer their time to me as well. Okay.
Now, hang on, because I want to make sure the time is straight for us. How many speakers total?
Mayor, we have five speakers total.
And you represent all of them, Mr. Charleston?
I do, and I'm not sure if Mr. Riddle signed up, but he's also here in support of this as well.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
So we start the timer for fifteen?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. My name is Jonathan Charleston. My address is two-oh-one Hay Street, Suite Two Thousand. I'm here tonight on behalf of the owner of the subject property located at seventy-three seventy-six Stony Point Road. My client has an interest in developing the approximately nine-acre tract of land that she and her family have owned and lived on since nineteen ninety-three. And there's one correction that I'd like to make is that the property is not being developed to be an Aldi grocery store. I don't know how that got in the record, and I really don't know how that would have been relevant anyway, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad you brought that to the attention of your colleagues. That's not relevant. There's no contract to develop this property. There's no real estate broker involved. There's no developer involved. It's just the Burns family who've owned that property since nineteen ninety-three, and I'd like to make sure that that's corrected in the record. The first point I'd like to bring to the attention of everyone, Mr. Chris, you'd be interested in this, I'm sure. This property was annexed into the city. When they bought this property, it was in the county. And so you've heard staff talking about whether or not there's water and sewer extended. I'm sure, Mr. Chris, you realize that there are a lot of people in the annexed area, ten, fifteen years after annexation, and there's not water or sewer there. And this is one family that's in that same situation, and they should not be penalized for being annexed into the city and the city has not extended water and sewer. I mean, through no fault, nobody on this council was here, I believe, when it was annexed, but that's a fact. So when the Burns family purchased this property, the entire area up and down Stony Point Road, Rockfish Road, Lakewood Road, and Fisher Road, it's true, they're all rural in character. And as each of you know all too well, the rural character of this area has dramatically changed in the twenty-four years since Hossie Burns and her family purchased that property to be their home. It still is their home. They actually have horses on the property. But like you and I, the Burns family seeks the highest and best use of the subject property. Everybody does. You buy some property, you don't want to sell your property for what you paid for it, Mr. Ark, twenty years ago. You want to realize what it's worth for yourself and for your family, and it shouldn't be a situation where one member of the community has to carry the burden for development. And I'm going to call it arrested development in this area, because that's essentially what the opposition wants you to do. They want you to arrest the development in that area. In other words, they want to enjoy the full benefit of their property, but they want everybody else's property to stay the same. There's something un-American about that. There's something totally un-American about that. In two thousand nine, eight years ago, as I mentioned, the Burns family came to city council and requested that their property be rezoned from R-10 to C-1. That was after the annexation, property was purchased, and all of the stuff that's been going on out there, all you guys know about it, four schools, the hottest area in the city for development. Why? Because they have great schools and great other amenities that are going on. But everybody knows that this is the hottest area in the city. This is no longer a rural community. This is not the county anymore. This is the city of Fayetteville. So tonight, we are requesting that city council rezone this property from SF-10, single-family residential, to limited commercial. And I want to make, again, a very important point, which may be contrary to what you may have heard at this time. There is no proposed use for the property. And as I said earlier, no real estate brokers, no developers, or anything. The only developer that's here tonight is here because he has property in the adjacent area that's been subject to the same arrested development. So we are urging each member of council to approach this request in a very logical fashion. We believe that when you consider the request on the merits, let's take all the collateral issues out. I mean, because everything you do, somebody's not going to be happy about it. You can't make two-hundred and, how many, two-hundred-and-thirty, two-hundred-and-three thousand people happy with you on every decision you make. If you want to do that, then you all shouldn't be in the elected business. Somebody's not going to be happy with some of the decisions, and I understand that. But we are urging each of you tonight to approach this request very logically, and we believe that when you consider it on the merits, it makes perfect sense to grant this request. In fact, and I'll speak to it a little bit later, city council has approved similar requests in the past. Some of them, I've represented folks on. And so I want to talk a little bit about this subject property. As I mentioned earlier, it has been, at least for the twenty-four years my client has owned the property, been used for residential purposes. They did come here before you eight years ago and asked for the nature of the practice, the nature of the property to be changed. All of you know, because I've talked to you over periods of time about commercial development in the city, but everyone knows there's enormous, enormous pressure for commercial development in this area, as well as the entire route of the proposed outer loop. There's nothing we can do that's going to stop development from coming, and we should embrace it. This development is entirely reasonable. Residential development follows convenience. The star power of the very strong schools in the area will continue to attract residential development, and it's not going to be low-density development that we've seen out there before. You're just not going to see that kind of development. Consequently, there will be a demand for commercial development, such as grocery stores, drugstores, and other amenities that residential communities like. I mean, many of you travel around. You've gone to places like Charlotte, Chapel Hill, Raleigh, Greensboro. All the nice neighborhoods have appropriate commercial development that supports those communities, and this should be nothing different. Now, the surrounding land uses of the property have been and continue to be residential mainly, but directly- mainly, but directly adjacent to the property is low-density residential uses and commercial uses. In fact, there is a non-conforming use, and I'm not sure if Mr. Harmon pointed that out to you, but, uh, there is a non-conforming use out there. Uh, there is a convenience store directly across the street, and there is a pet resort across the street. I know that because I represent that company.
Mr. Charleston, if I can, um, you've used up about half your time.
Okay.
When we continue the public hearing, if we continue the public hearing another time, you won't be able to speak if you use up all your time.
I'm hoping I can make the case here tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So, one of the reasons this, uh, that, that the staff uses as a basis for denial, uh, recommending denial of the, uh, the request, is that the 2010 plan calls for this area to be substantially rural in nature. As I mentioned before, the 2010 plan was developed a very long time ago, and it's really, at this point in time, doesn't reflect what the actual uses actually are. And so, we talked about, as I mentioned before, that, uh, there are some adjacent property owners there that support the request. The gentleman is here tonight, uh, owns a significant tract of land out there. As many of you know, and I've talked to you about it time and again, the most fundamental and treasure principle in our land is that property owners should be allowed to develop their property to its highest and best use. That's been the history of our country, that's been the history of this community, and that they should be allowed to do that unless there's a substantial adverse effect on the adjacent property. In the instant case, the case we're here to talk about tonight, the Burns family, they've had nothing, absolutely nothing, to do with the development of the area around, uh, their property. They've had nothing to do with the increased traffic in the area that folks complain about. They've had nothing to do with the fact that we have four schools within two miles in that area. Uh, they don't have anything to do with the higher-density residential development that's coming. They've not had anything to do with the commercial development. All of that has happened around them in the twenty-four years that they've owned that property, and they are being impacted. Instead, as I mentioned earlier, the Burns family is being asked to shoulder the entire burden on this property and to minimize the impact on property owned by folks that are here tonight that object to the rezoning. In other words, it's okay for you to be impacted, but don't impact me. That's what happened eight years ago. It's okay for you to be impacted, but don't impact me. There's something fundamentally unfair about that. Should this citizen, who pays taxes like everybody else, be forced to bear the entire burden on her property for the development that she did not control? Or should we allow development to occur in its natural course? Should the Burns family be forced to bear the risk of having a vacant residential property that you saw the land? The only thing that you can really do there in a reasonable fashion is to have some form of commercial development. The council should grant the Burns request because there are really no objectionable characteristics associated with this property. And one of the things, uh, ladies and gentlemen on, on council, that I'd like to point out that staff didn't point out to you, may I approach, Mayor? What I'm passing around is a Google, I'm, I'm relying on my staff to, to help me explain this correctly. It's an aerial view of a two-mile stretch of that area, and I want to show you what's really out there and how, if the council were to deny this cre, request, how it would be fundamentally unfair to this client. Does everybody have this map in front of them? Right here, in the middle here, is the Harris Teeter. Will that work? Hold on, you're going to get real high.
Three, oh, sorry.
In the middle, in the middle of the, uh, of the map, and I don't know if you can see it, right here is the Harris Teeter at Traymore. If you look around that, immediately up in this area, all low-density development, all low-density development. Now, right here is the subject property, low-density development, low-density development, and then you have schools around here. You have Jack Britt High School, and you have Stony Point Elementary School. There's really no difference between the property that's looking to be developed here, uh, to be rezoned, because there's low-density development there and there's low-density development here, but in this particular case, we have a number of commercial uses in that area. Directly across from the Harris Teeter is low-density development. All of that is within less than two miles of the subject property. Then, uh, if you recall, in October of, I think it was October of twenty fourteen, case number P-fourteen thirty-one F came before city council. It was the rezoning of property from single-family ten residential to limited commercial conditional zoning district. City council approved that, and what I'm handing out to you now is showing, is a map that shows you the aerial of the land that the city council rezoned for commercial uses, although it had conditions on it. This is all in the Fisher-Lakewood Road area, which is right down the street, all in the general vicinity, all with the low-density residential uses all around it, but city council felt appropriate in granting that request. And so I will submit to you, ladies and gentlemen, tonight, that the request for the rezoning tonight is reasonable. There's no evidence that the rezoning of this, of this property will have any appreciable adverse impact on surrounding uses. DOT has also, by the way, taken some of that property, because DOT envisions that there will be road widening and other uses at that spot. There was a DOT imminent domain taking of, of a certain part of their land all the way around, uh, and I have the deeds if you all would like to see that. So on behalf of the Burns family, I respectfully request that city council grant this reasonable request twenty-four years after they purchased the property, eight years after they first came here, four schools later, several shopping centers later, several residential communities later, and I'm certainly here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charleston. I'm not seeing any questions from the council. Oh, Mr. Devere.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Charleston.
Yes, sir, Councilman.
Thank you for your detailed and articulate presentation. Um, just reviewing the email that the mayor referenced coming in at two PM today, are you saying you're pulling that request?
Am I saying I'm pulling it? No, no, I'm going to go along with what the council has suggested will happen, because, quite frankly, at this point, I think what you guys are saying is you're not going to close your public hearing, you'll have it open later, just my portion will be complete.
That was at your request, Mr. Charleston, if you want to withdraw this request, and we'll go ahead and vote on it tonight.
Well...
Go ahead.
I haven't withdrawn.
Do, do you plan to pull this request?
I haven't withdrawn the request.
Okay. So, Mr. Charleston, what you articulated, you needed to gather additional information that'll be helpful to city council. Based on all the information you just presented us the last fifteen minutes, what other information is going to be helpful for us?
That's, that's an excellent question. We've, we've requested tax records and other information along those lines. We've had a presentation that we've made to city council before that included, among other things, traffic counts that we've requested from DOT to talk about the, the traffic, how many cars pass that area. You used to be, at one time, Bobby Hurst, you used to be able to get that from city staff, what the traffic count was and all that kind of stuff. So all those requests have been made that I think will be helpful in assisting city council to, uh, to, uh, review this matter.
So you feel there's still additional information to present to us?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Devere. So you do wish, I want to make sure that, you do wish for us to continue with your request that the item be pulled.
But you haven't pulled it. I think what you all, what I understood you were doing was...
We want it so as to not inconvenience the folks that have signed up for and against.
Exactly.
We wanted to hear from them.
Understood.
Do you want us to vote on the issue tonight, since it's, you're the one that petitioned? Or do you want us to continue it?
I think, I mean, I think the other information would be helpful, but I, I'll tell you this, if, uh, if the, if the council believes that it has sufficient information, uh, certainly I believe that the traffic count, you know, I can tell you about how that's been impacted, I can tell you about the, the tax values and all that other stuff, but if it, uh, you know, at this point, I'm not withdrawing it. I submitted, I thought it was made, you know, appropriately, and I'd like to provide that additional information. I don't have to make it in the form of a presentation to you, but I'd like for you to have the additional information.
Okay, very good. All right, I see a lot of lights. Um, do we, we want to hear from the opposing side before we...
I need a question.
Have we got questions? Okay. All right, so, uh, all the lights popped up at the same time, so I'll just start with
Just a point of order.
Okay.
Typically, when we do a, open a, a public hearing, you'll be here, and at some point, after the public hearing's closed, some type of motion is made, which then generates questions, which is different than questioning staff during staff presentation of an item versus questioning speakers, wh, whether for or against.
Is that what your light was for, was for the point of order?
Yeah. Um, just to get that clarified, is this the appropriate time to start engaging questions with one side and not the other when, um, no motion has been made? Because a pu, public hearing, you do your fifteen minutes, you listen to both sides, you close the public hearing, and then there's a series of discussions, and you could ask questions of either side or staff.
Okay, well, I'm...
I'm just, I'm just asking how we want to do it tonight.
Okay, we basically finished with one side. I thought this would be an appropriate time to ask questions while the questions are fresh.
Okay.
My question is to a point of order.
You have a point of order?
Yes, sir.
All right, go ahead.
Mr. Charleston, you submitted a request to this council in an email to delay voting on the public, uh, the, the rezoning of this property. I am not clear if you're saying you're withdrawing your request for us to delay the vote on that or not.
No, no, I didn't make that request.
Yes, sir, it's in writing.
No, no, it's not. What I asked you to do was to postpone the hearing, but not, yeah, but not, right.
Delay, postpone and delay are basically the same.
Well, the distinction, uh, Mr. Chris, is that council came back and said, no, we're not going to postpone the public hearing, we're going to hear from, uh, the pros and cons, but we will delay the vote to a later time. But, so I, that, that's a little nuance there, but, uh, you know, so I just wanted to make that clear.
Well, council said that they would not close the public hearing, okay, but because of your request, is all this has been precipitated. Therefore, my question to you is, do you want us to delay the public hearing? In other words, not close it, but continue it at a later date, and then vote on the rezoning at a later date? Is that your request? That's what you said.
Right, and, and I think that what my request is, I, I made the request for the additional time to provide you with some additional information that I thought was germane. I still believe that. And so I think it would be helpful for you to have that additional information that we've requested, uh, before, uh, you make your decision, that's my view. But what, but what I was concerned about was having a portion of the hearing heard with, with, uh, with speakers speaking on one day, and then subsequent speakers speaking at another time, because I wasn't sure whether that information would be fresh in everybody's minds at the time the decision was made. So I spoke with my client, and I said, we'll just go ahead and, and present our information, then we'll present the additional information when we get it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Charleston. Our attorney has told us that we need to hear the other side prior to any more conversation. So, Madam Clerk.
Ma'am, um, Ms. Debbie Lebers.
Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I'm Debbie Lebers, and I reside at three-four-three-nine Dundle Road. I'm here tonight to ask you to say no to this rezoning at this intersection on Stony Point Road and Dundle Road. We've lived at this address for the past thirty-seven years. We've watched our area change from rural farming, dirt roads, Dundle Road used to be a dirt road, and wild blackberry picking to rural suburban. This is not the first time, as we've heard, that commercial zoning has been requested at this intersection. In fact, five other times rezoning has been requested and denied. Nineteen ninety-eight, two thousand and five, two thousand and seven, two thousand and nine, two thousand and eleven, all denied. This property has been denied one time. It's come before y'all one time. Uh, the first time this was denied was in nineteen ninety-eight by the county commissioners. We had six housing developments within three-quarters of a mile. I did not go two miles out, but I can probably add to this, uh, within three-quarters of a mile from the intersection. Now, in twenty seventeen, we have seventeen housing developments within the same distance. We are truly a residential area, and we're only one mile from the Hoek County line. So this is what's happening. We were told the last time we were in here by, um, the attorney that it was going to be an Aldi's, and that's where that came from. And, um, I can't imagine any commercial property being put in this location as there's two-hundred acres plus being developed just down the road. Um, this is a bad idea because the 2010 land plan and the two-thirty growth vision plan, which I've been carrying around with me for years, and somebody paid a lot of money to do this and come to this conclusion, and I don't think it said in here, ignore it, because it's old information, um, the zoning department has said in the past, it would be like opening a Pandora's box to allow any commercial development in this area, and the zoning department has denied all, all of the five previous requests. Now, whether it's an Aldi's, whatever, once it's rezoned, anything that's allowed in that type of zoning can be put there.
Let me interrupt you for just a minute, because you're limited to three minutes unless others have yielded your time.
I have fifteen minutes.
Ma'am, there was, um, Ms., uh, sorry, I believe your husband had signed up too, and you were speaking on behalf of him.
Yes, and they, I was told, um...
Can you stop the clock, Madam Clerk?
I was told by Jennifer that I have fifteen minutes because I'm the only one speaking.
Oh, if that's the case, then that's fine. Yes, ma'am. So let's reset, well, actually, we'll just let her run over for a minute, because I've taken a minute. Thank you, ma'am, sorry.
Okay. Um, anything that's allowed in this type of zoning can be put there, and we really won't have anything to say about it, whether it's an Aldi's or another food line, which we don't need. Um, but anything that's commercial on this proposed location is going to stick out like a sore thumb. We're, we're houses, we're developments. The two schools that are close to us are Jack Britt and Stony Point. They're about three-quarters of a mile down the road. In fact, three-quarters of the mi, of a mile down the road. There's already a huge, huge area being developed on the left side of Stony Point Road, and that becomes Rockfish Road when you go through that line there at Lakewood. It's being developed, they have sixty-plus acres. There's already a CVS, a Harris Teeter, and a small shopping center with twenty-seven retail spaces. At this time, there are two vacant rentals that have been vacant for about two years, so they haven't been, I wouldn't say they haven't been successful, but I wouldn't say they've been totally successful either. Um, on the other... Um, on the other side of Rockfish Road, there's another hundred-plus acres being developed. There's a food line shopping center on the right side of Rockfish, and in front of the food line, there's a BB and T bank, uh, that's only been there for three years, and guess what? They closed last Friday. Last Friday was their last day there. They built a bank, and they had to move for lack of business. Pardon me? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Okay, um, all total on both sides of Rockfish Road, there's at least two hundred-plus acres being developed. All commercial, and there shouldn't be any commercial going west beyond Lakewood Drive. When you go across at that line there, and you go on down Stony Point Road, there's beautiful homes down through there. And so between there and where the, uh, corner is where she's wanting to be rezoned, there's nice properties through there. We have nice developments. This land backs up to Gates Four. It's, they're kind of separated by a ditch, kind of a, I don't know, ravine of some sort, but it's a residential neighborhood, and nothing should happen beyond that point. Now, did you all see the, um, petition that was put before you tonight? Two hundred and sixty-seven names. That's a lot of names. I've been doing this, this is the sixth time my neighborhood has done this, excuse me, done this, and I think I've had a hundred and forty, the most names I've ever gotten. People do not want this because it is going to open a Pandora's Box. I've lived in Fayetteville since nineteen sixty-seven, and I see, and I've seen what unnecessary commercial rezoning can do to a neighborhood. Just think, there's still time, according to these reports here and these findings, for us to have a well-planned residential community out our way. And it's sort of been happening on its own. But of course, we already have a plan. We have these plans. And rezoning has been denied five times since nineteen ninety-eight, and nothing has changed since these other five denials in this area to warrant rezoning to commercial. Especially when we have all this stuff going on down the road from us. Every day, I went by there today, and they're clearing land for something else down there. And this is going to look foolish. Any commercial property being developed across the street is going to look foolish. As far as the convenience store, we don't consider that a convenience store. That's four-way grocery. That has been here since nineteen fifty-five. And it's our little country grocery store. There's a little grill attached to it. The owners live on the other side of the store. And we consider it our store. Nobody has a problem with it. And as far as other commercial properties in the area, um, there's not many. There's, uh, Southview Sanitation, which they don't use as commercial anymore. Their daughter lives in, in the house. And, um, the Pet Resort is a special permit, and it's, you can't see it from the road. It's in back of their house. And this is just a bad, senseless rezoning request. This is my neighborhood, and the two hundred and sixty-seven people who signed this petition really believe that all said. We live in a residential community. Changing this would be like paving paradise and putting up a parking lot. Thank you. Any questions? Oh, I do, I want to make sure that I understand this. I'm not quite, I don't understand what's going to happen tonight. Are we voting on this or not? And, and he gets to just decide? He asked for it, and now he can decide whether he wants to do it or not? Is that how it's going to work?
This council will decide if we're going to take action on the item. It's lo- unlikely that we will tonight.
Okay.
Um, so if you were noticed the first time of the public hearing, you will be noticed as it continues.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I do have several lights. Uh, Mr. Crisp, did you have another question, or you done? Mr. Devier? Nope? Mr. Colvin? Oh, thank you. We'll close the public hearing. Mr. Colvin?
Do I have my five minutes left?
It's closed at this point. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, unless somebody asks you a question.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jensen?
I, I have a few, I have two questions. So when I'm looking at this on the map here, it's, it is marked off, and there is a house in this property. Who owns that house?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Charleston, unless she calls you, staff's going to need to...
I'm sorry.
Mr. Harmon? Sorry about that.
So...
Councilman Jensen, if you're referring to the home there in the hatched pattern,
Uh-huh.
that is Ms., uh, Burns.
Okay, so all this is, is residential, correct?
Correct.
So the house and the area around it is all, is all marked as residential?
Currently, yes.
Okay.
Except for the, the two right here on the, uh, south side of the property.
Okay, so these two in the blue, that, that one is limited commercial?
Correct, that's the convenience store, country grocery. Uh, and then this is neighborhood commercial, and this is the one that's actually Ms. Levers' property.
Okay, okay. Alright, so I guess the, the question that I'm going to ask is because I have the similar, exact similar thing that has happened in my neighborhood off on Ramsey Street, the other side of Fayetteville that is booming and, you know, that there's nothing left except a few areas, and in front of our neighborhood, the same thing has happened. My question is, has the owners and the homeowners gotten together and said, you know, what, what are you okay with being on this property? Because the owners are paying taxes on it, something's going to come, and if the neighborhood is saying, we just want residential, and that's all we want. I mean, have you had the conversation with, I guess, Mr. Charleston and the owner of the property? And some, is anybody allowed to answer that question for me? Are they allowed? Ha- have y'all had a conversation?
We want to keep this residential. We don't see the necessity for anything. It's going to look foolish.
Okay, so my question, okay, tha- that's my answer. My...
We have talked about this, yes.
Okay, so, okay, so you, y'all are not willing to come together and try to work something out? Okay, alright, that's all I needed. Thank you.
Mr. McDougal, do you have another question or no?
I never asked the first question, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McDougal, do you have a question?
You've not honored my light, and I just kept quiet. I did have, um, a point of order in that I don't believe that it's Mr. Charleston or any of the other speakers tonight decision to make whether we vote or not. It is this council's collectively.
I agree with you, sir. That's what...
Thank you, sir.
I just told the young lady a minute ago. Alright, I don't see any other lights. Counsel, I'll go to you for action. Mr. Crisp?
Mr. Mayor, I have on my presence over two hundred signatures objecting to the rezoning to a commercial status of this property, and in that stead, I move to deny the request for rezoning from residential to limited commercial.
Second. That's the motion by Mr. Crisp, second by Mr. Devier. Is there a discussion on the motion? Mr. Colvin?
Uh, I didn't, didn't realize we were going to continue hearing it tonight. Uh, Mr. Harmon, is he around? Mr. Harmon, on that plan that, um, put the proposed land usages, what year was that drafted? I know they said it's a twenty-ten plan. What year was it actually?
I think somewhere in the, uh, I think about twenty years prior to that, or fifteen...
Twenty years prior to twenty-ten? So it's like, almost a thirty-year-old plan?
Yeah, I think it was in the, uh, mid-nineties, actually. So probably about ten to fifteen years before...
It has a date on it.
Oh, does she?
Yes, and this is the twenty-thirty thousand.
Well, that, you know, that's the, that's a different one.
So, uh, the most current one that this is referencing, is it the twenty-ten or the one that you said?
We've re- we have referenced both the twenty-ten and the twenty-thirty plan.
Okay, alright. When was the twenty-thirty plan drafted?
That was adopted, uh, it was either two thousand nine or two thousand ten.
That's a city, city plan?
Yes.
The city adopted, okay, thank you.
It was a joint effort with the county, but...
I, I was just, uh, my point was, was that, um, I don't know where I'm at with this completely, but I, I'm just thinking that if it was a thirty-year-old plan, that the, the landscape of the, of the city is changing, and I don't know at some point that the residents are going to have to, you know, have to come to grips with, with that at some point, but, uh, not for this particular case, but I, I know that the scope of the city is changing over a twenty, thirty-year period, and at some point, I think this is the fourth or fifth time that, that something has come, and, and you all have had an agreement, so I don't know. Maybe, uh, just the way I see it, sometime in the near future, maybe the residents need to talk about what the possibilities are, because twenty years from now, we can't still have the same argument that you wanted to keep it rural with the same little country grocery store from the fifties, because at some point, progress is going to catch up with us, and that, that's just my statement. I'm not using that to make a decision tonight, but I do think that at some point, you're going to have to have some realistic conversation.
No, ma'am, thank you.
No, ma'am, it was just discussion on the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, discussion on the motion. Mr. Moan?
You know, looking at the graphic in front of us on the screen still, with the, uh, yellow buffer, the hatch pattern, you know, um, you've got limit, uh, limited commercial, three neighborhood commercial rezonings. You go back, Gates Four was built recently, you know, that portion. You go back to the, the dates, to the north, lands down, two thousand and four. Councilmember Crisp, your neighborhood right above, roughly the same timeframe, two thousand and three. You look at Surry Meadows, two thousand and thirteen, and while these have been, they're not agricultural residential neighbors. I mean, just look at the top of the screen. It's, I mean, those are neighborhoods packed in, developer, as tight as you can fit. Typical cul-de-sacs, you could put as many homes around the cul-de-sac. So in the last twenty-five years, most of those places weren't there. Those were farmlands. Um, if you look, this area is no longer agricultural residential. This is my opinion. You're at a major intersection when Councilmember Colvin and I work on the Transportation Policy Board, where we look at the State Transportation Improvement Plan, uh, two ninety-five coming through, this lateral connection is going to get widened at some point. It's going to come to us at FAMPO. And so I'm having, has there been any discussion with the applicant of possibly looking at neighborhood commercial with some conditions, which is consistent with this area? It's less restrictive, it still meets that first step, uh, but it's not full-blown commercial. It's not commercial, it's less than limited commercial. It's neighborhood commercial, same property right there below the corner store, neighborhood commercial. Um, is that something the applicant would be willing to discuss? Uh, neighborhood commercial with some...
Are you addressing, are you addressing Mr. Charleston?
I'd like to ask Mr. Charleston if that's something that might be a consideration.
Alright, if you want to come to the microphone, Mr. Charleston.
Uh, uh, Mr. Moan, thank you. Uh, certainly, we would consider, um, the various options and, you know, and work with staff if that's an appropriate thing to do.
It's Ms. Lebers' property.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Charleston.
So then, uh, follow-up question would be for Mr. Harmon?
As it relates to the motion?
As it relates to the motion. The motion was to disapprove limited commercial rezoning from single-family to LC. If an amendment to the motion was made or, or withdrawn to allow the applicant, the neighbors, um, those that live immediately adjacent to the property, I mean, if you live a mile away, that's not what I'm talking about. I mean, the, the people that physically live there, to discuss the possibility of neighborhood commercial, which there's three of them inside that circle, um, how long do you think that might take for potential options?
Um, you know, that would depend on how quickly the two sides wanted to get together, for one. That's probably the biggest thing, but maybe a couple of months just to, to formalize something like that.
What I'm hoping is that we can create some dialogue between the sites, the sides, versus having no discussion whatsoever, uh, and, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moan. Mr. Crisp?
Mr. Mayor, I, I do want to point out just, as, as a part of the discussion, that even the vote from the zoning commission was three to two. That's not a clear mandate to me. And then couple that with the, uh, recommendation for denial by the city staff, and couple that with the two hundred-plus signature that I have in front of me, I'm not amenable to a friendly amendment to this motion. I stand on the motion to deny.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wright?
Oh, yes, Mr. Harmon. Looking at the, um, the overlay of the map here, um, this grassy area up top, uh, how many acres is that outside of the, um, the property that's owned by the, the young lady? How much is that area?
The wooded area up here, uh, I don't recall the exact number on that, um, but it is fairly comparable in size to the one that we're looking at, so...
Sure, so that's, um, it's just totally grass, trees, whatever?
Trees.
Okay, now, the, the property in question here, um, there is no idea what you are going to do with this property. At this point, you just want to, um, rezon it commercial. My, uh, my idea in looking at the map, uh, in that DOT has already purchased some of the, uh, the roadway to extend this property in the future, and that if you would look back thirty, forty years ago when it was rural, uh, you can plainly see that this area is no longer a rural area, that it, it has grown substantially in those amount of years, and so the property owners have held on to this property, um, that has been in the family for years, and now, neighborhoods, commercial property has grown up around them. Uh, I feel that we can, uh, no longer resist the change that's, we obviously see that's taking place in this area here and also across the city of Fayetteville, in that when this area was purchased, it was in the county. So i- in my mindset, if I owned the property, I would want to do, um, the best for my family's future and, and to leave the inheritance for my children. Uh, and of course, you're never going to please in everyone, but I see this area really is getting ready. Within the next five to ten years, we're not going to be able to resist what's inevitable, and that's what's going to take place in this area anyway. Um, and so, um, I couldn't vote against the, the fact that this area and where it's looking, um, not to rezon it because it's on a major thoroughfare, and there's a, um, a cross-section there. I see traffic lights, I see, uh, uh, in the future, a five-lane highway. I see all of that in the future, and how can we, you know, deny that? I, I would, I wouldn't vote.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. As it pertains to the motion, Mr. McDougal.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you calling on me now? Lord knows what we would do.
You've got two lights pressed, yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, I pressed one and never got, taken a little time. I don't know what we would do if we weren't friends. Commercial development just naturally follows residential development. Uh, most of you know I grew up on the north side of town and had a little twenty-three acre piece, and residential, I mean, it just came in and exploded, so... So, the commercial developed, there's no way to stop it. People like convenience. They like to be able to quickly go to the grocery store and come on back to the house and make it happen. They like, you know, you know, they just like convenience. We love convenience, we love to stop on the way home and be able to get it and be right there. And, um, uh, there's no way that we're gonna be able to stop that commercial development because of the residential development that's already taken place. Uh, some of the places out there are act, actually absolutely beautiful, some of the commercial sites that have taken place, like the one that was mentioned in, in your presentation, Mr. Harmon, over, by Jack Brett School, uh, across from the, um, the Recreation Center there. I mean, just beautiful locations. Um, and the other thing is, I think about this in relationship to other parts of the city, especially like the Murkison Road Corridor, we're begging for this kind of development. And then, out on the side where the residential is actually develop, and the reason that we're not getting it over there is because there's not residential development going on. So, it's going where the people are. It, so if you're not developing one, you don't get the other. So, I don't, you, you know, I don't, it, I agree with the, uh, the commission that it is best for us to go head on and, and, uh, to allow the people to have. I don't, you know, I don't know who signed the petition, I don't know those folk. Um, but I believe that they are not aware of the convenience that it would bring to their community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Colvin.
Uh, two things, one, I don't think we gave the other side an opportunity to answer the question if you would be amenable to a conversation about a neighborhood, uh, zoning classification. I know Mr. Charleston answered for the other side, did you wanna add to that? I, I know you can't speak for your whole neighborhood, but is that something that you would take back to them to consider? And, I didn't, I didn't hear a second. And, and two, maybe in, before you answer your question, Mr. Harmon, what are some examples of this neighborhood zoning classification? That would be different from what light commercial would do?
Well, one of the things, and, and it may not even be amme, amenable to the, uh, to the owner of the property, is it does limit the size of the, uh, of what can be built. Um, there's a limit up to twenty-five-hundred square feet, then it has to go through a special process. Yeah, it, it's getting a lot of, try to, is that a little better? Um, it limits on the, uh, the size that the stores can be. Even say if they did do, uh, wanted to get a grocery store, you couldn't have the normal-sized grocery store, it would be a smaller.
So, so it'd be something not quite like the, the nineteen-fifties corner store you described, but not a big box Walmart either? It, it would be something smaller than that, but, okay. So, so ma'am, with that being said, is that something that, uh, you'd be willing to take back?
Well, would that be like a convenience store, a gas station? I mean, could they put that, would that be considered?
Yeah, they could still put some of those things there, um.
No, no, no. This is not a commercial area, it just isn't. Anything on that corner is going to look.
All right, well, well, that was, I just wanted to, that, that question answered before. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen.
I, I'm just gonna say a few words, um, I, I'm up here tonight because of what has, because of a neighborhood situation. So, I understand fully what y'all are feeling and what you're going through. But I will say that, you know, this property cannot stay vacant forever. And I, I feel that you really need to maybe open it up. And I know so much is coming at you tonight because we're throwing things at you and we're saying, what about this and what about that? And it's hard to digest it all in. But I really, I, I'm really trying to talk to the neighborhood people and say, you do need to get together. And you, maybe to work this thing out. And, and I understand, in my neighborhood, we have it that you cannot put a convenience store in the front of our neighborhood. Because we sat down and we talked to the owner and we said, this is what we want. And it took us, you know, four or five times talking, so we could all be happy in it. But if you leave it for a situation up here, it might be worse than what you want. So, I believe it's always better to sit and try to work it out and talk about it of what you're, what you're okay with and what the owner can help with. But if we do it this way, I don't think you're gonna be happy. So, that's, I, I don't, can she speak or no?
Can I answer her?
Now, I was, I was just kind of reaching out to you that a lot is coming out to you to soak in. And I would like to maybe make a friendly amendment that we could, I, I, I mean, I'm sorry, make an amendment to the motion. And I know you said no the first time, but maybe come back in a month and maybe they can get together and have a conversation because there's quite a few of them.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen.
They can go back to.
All right, seeing no further lights, we'll.
No. I, I, Mrs., Mrs. Jensen was making a friendly amendment, I didn't hear a second, but I'm not in favor of that. What I will do is I will try to sit down with Mr. Charleston, Ms. Lebers and members out there to reach some kind of solution beyond tonight. But I stand on my motion because clearly, the zoning commission was split and the staff recommended denial.
Okay, thank you, we do have one more, uh, uh, question for the motion, that was Mr. Harmon.
Hey, Mr. Harmon, if you could come up. So, i, i, if the, if the motion Mr. Crisp has made denied passes, what, when would the, uh, the owner be able to bring, bring back a petition to the council?
One year from now.
So, it'd be a one-year?
Yeah.
Uh, delay, if you will, and then she, she could come back again in one year?
Correct.
Um. I'm sorry, I can't. Say, yeah? If a supermajority, yes, and, and that's a correct statement. If the sup, if a supermajority of the council elected to vote, we could bring it back early.
Correct. Yes, the council could do that.
Yeah. I, I just wanna, I just wanna say this, um. The city's growing, whether we want it to grow or not. Cross Creek Mall used to be farmland.
Oh, yeah.
And as a boy, I hunted on it. Sycamore Dairy was a real farm. Sycamore Dairy was a real farm. I remember the cows, Bobby, and, uh, I mean, that's, that's where our milk came from. Uh, there, there's changes coming, whether, whether we want it or not, it's coming. Now, the question is, how are we gonna manage change? I, I do wanna agree with Councilwoman Jensen. Um, I'm here tonight because I took on an issue with my neighborhood at the front of King's Grant. And we petitioned our elected leaders and we worked with our council member back then. And we came to an agreement on, uh, the property at the front of the neighborhood that everybody could live with. And it was a good agreement. Um, I know the neighborhood I live in currently right now, we did the same thing with the developer who owns the property at the front of the neighborhood. Um, and, and we went to that developer and we said, hey, uh, he, he wanted another zoning. We said, we're opposed to that, but can we work on something that we can all agree to? And, and, and he was willing to do that. My concern tonight is, i, if we, if we vote on this, it's gonna be a win-lose. Somebody's gonna win and somebody's gonna lose. And I promise you, whoever's on the L-side is not gonna be happy. And so, what does that mean? A year from now, if it's the owner, that they'll be coming back because they have the right to. If it's the citizens and you lose tonight, there's no coming back. The zoning's done. And once, and the reason I wanted to stress to Mr. Harmon that, not to talk about a grocery station, is once the council agrees to a zoning and it is zoned, there's no control over what goes there. Whatever the zoning is, it's allowable within the, uh, the ordinance of the zoning. So, I, I just wanna make sure everybody's straight on this tonight. I, if the, if the, if the residents lose in the vote, and I don't know how it's gonna go, then, then you lose. But if we delay this and give you a chance to work with the owner, you don't have to lose everything up front. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Restate your motion, Mr. Crisp, and then we'll move forward.
Mr. Mayor, to restate the motion, my motion was to deny the rezoning of the property on Stony Point at Dundee from SF-ten to limited commercial.
And that was seconded by Mr. Devere?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further questions, council, I'll ask for your vote, please to deny the rezoning. That motion fails, it's a five to five.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Moe.
Uh, since the motion failed, uh, would it be appropriate that I make a follow-on motion? The motion to deny failed, so nothing's happened. Would it be appropriate for me to make a second motion for council's consideration?
Yes, sir.
I would recommend, um, oh, Mr. Harmon, can I ask Mr. Harmon a question first? So, I'll get this right. Would it be appropriate for a council to say, a direct staff to work with the property owner, legal representation, and, uh, the, the others, to look at possibilities for either a neighborhood commercial, a limited commercial with restrictions, like you can restrict out gas stations, you could restrict out certain things. And we've done that before, where we tried to come to an agreement with the property owner and the neighbors to come back. Where, I mean, there was times, we, you know, we struck out eighteen different types of developments that would not be permitted to help protect the neighborhood.
Well, as the example Ms., uh, J, Councilman Jensen made, uh, we did the same thing, uh, there at the entrance to her neighborhood not long ago. So, that's definitely a possibility.
Okay, so then, it was the mayor and council's permission, I'd like to make a motion that we have the applicant, the city staff, and those who oppose the straight LC rezoning to work together. Uh, and then, based on staff's recommendation, come back at a future council meeting with an update on whether there's consensus on maybe a zoning, a rezoning with conditions, conditional rezoning.
Mr. Councilman, would you like to put a, a time limit on that, so it's just not a free-floating?
I would think sixty days would be plenty. Ninety days? Okay, within ninety days, would that, Mr. Manager, would that be okay?
Yeah, Matt, Matt, I've got lights all over the place from the manager and the attorney.
Okay.
Oh, give him the option. No, you can't. It'll be a new council, ninety-eight, and they'll be all over, doing it all over again.
No, I didn't, it got turned off too quick.
Mr. Harmon?
Yes, just to clarify, one, one little point on that. If it does, uh, if, as Councilman Moe, uh, has suggested, and we do that process and through that process, uh, it looks like a conditional zoning is the best route to go. That would mean that instead of it just coming straight back to city council, it would have to go through the zoning commission as well. It basically start the process anew. Just so everybody is aware of how that would work.
Okay, we do have some lights, we'll go to Mr. Wright first, then Mr. Colvin, Mr. Crisp.
You know, the question.
Oh, Mr. Manager, I see your light again, go ahead, sir.
Yeah.
Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Samantha. The question that I have is the consideration of the landowner. Uh, if you're gonna be negotiating, uh, after the, the vote has failed and you're gonna go back, we, we don't know if the land, what their plan is, whether they're planning to develop this property themselves or they're planning to sell the property. If you put limitations and restrictions on this piece of property, um, then maybe the, the people that maybe purchased the property from the landowner, are they under those limitations as well? Um, how does that work?
Yes, they would be unless they came through, back through the rezoning process as well.
Okay, Mr. Colvin.
Well, I had talked to Councilmember Moe, um, and just see if he would maybe consider amending the motion, uh, to just leave it open to give the two parties the option to talk about it. Because I don't think we can compel either anyone to the table, but maybe we leave it open for a ninety-day period or what have you, give them the option. But if not, then it comes back through the process, like Mr. Harmon stated, and, and then I guess the council will, will make the decision. Uh, so I, I don't know, were you, look, were you amenable to amending that?
Uh, yes, I would, give them the option to work together.
Okay, so, you made the motion, was there a second to that motion? Mr. Wright, of course, seconded the motion, what was I thinking about? Okay, Mr. Crisp?
Mr. Mayor, we cannot by motion compel citizens to come to the table. I said earlier that I welcome the opportunity to meet with Mr. Charleston, Ms. Lebers, and anyone else to sit down and try to broker a, an agreement that is amenable to the landowner as well as to the citizens in that community. I would welcome the opportunity to, to do that with Mr. Charleston, Ms. Lebers, one other resident, as well as Mr. Harmon and staff, to see if we can reach some agreements concerning what to do about the economic development in that area. That's what I wanted to do.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Devere, to the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I, I just wanna clarify, so with this motion, they still have to go back through the process? Madam Attorney?
Well, you are right, they have to go back through the process if it is to consider a conditional rezoning. But I thought, what I heard at this point, what was being discussed was a time period to see if the two parties can get together. If the two parties cannot get together or at the conclusion of that time period, this will come before the council for a decision. That decision at that time could be to approve it or to deny it and to start a conditional rezoning process. That's what I thought the conversation was. But, Mr. Moe, you jump in at any time.
So, just.
Mr. Devere has the floor.
So, again, just so to, to clarify, because what you're saying is it's gonna come back to us and if they say they've reached a decision, then we're gonna go back through, it has to go back through the zoning commission?
If they reach, if they reach some type of decision in which the parties are willing to consider the conditional rezoning process, then yes.
So, so I guess I'm kinda questioning, I mean, we're kinda saying council-directed zoning. If Mr. Crisp is willing to meet with the parties on his own accord, it needs to be citizen-driven from either the petitioner, the, the person who owns the property, i, if they wanna change it, based on what they work with the citizens and move it forward, versus, it kinda sounds like the council is directing the two parties to get together.
So, yeah, and I need to clarify with, uh, Mayor Protem's amendment is give them the ninety days to, and Mr. Crisp, if he wants to meet, to give them the option to come together. And, uh, Mayor Protem brought it up that we cannot compel anybody to meet.
Correct.
And so, that ninety days would be, uh, give them the option.
What happens at the end of ninety days?
Then it comes back to us. If there's no consensus, then it'll come back to us.
For we didn't take action tonight.
Right, and that, that's the motion, I want it to come back so we take a final action. When there's a five-five vote, we have the option to just let it drop and not visit it again for a year. Or we could set a timeline to have something come back for a consideration. And so, I'm trying to give ninety days. and so, I'm trying to give 90 days for the parties, if they want to, not, they don't have to, but if they want to, and then if not, then-
I want to make sure we're not compelling, and that's what I wanted the-
No, no, no.
Attorney to clarify, to clarify the motion. Thank you, Mr. Moan, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Arp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Madam Attorney, just so, for clarification, so, the public hearing was presented tonight on our agenda item, a motion to deny was made, that was voted on, it tied five-five, but that doesn't resolve the issue of the public hearing, because technically, a motion to approve was not made, is that correct?
That's correct, so the motion on the floor is to delay action.
To delay action on the agenda item, which we can, we can do that without any, we can delay, we can delay it for a period of time, or we can delay it indefinitely.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jensen.
Okay, this is the last time I'm gonna speak. I think with the motion that we're doing, I think that all that we are asking is that both parties come together, and I'm gonna go back to what happened to my neighborhood, and how we addressed it. Councilmember Arp was in my neighborhood before, when we started our area with the Harris Teeter, so when Harris Teeter wanted to come to the front of our neighborhood, where we had houses backing up, we called in, and we had the homeowners come, and we put out on next door, this is what's happening, please come, we had everybody there, and it was very, it was calm, because we knew what they could have and what they couldn't have, so, when the developer came and said, they want this, the homeowner stood up and said, no, you cannot do this, there has to be a buffer, and so, when the area was getting sold, everybody didn't go crazy, because it was already rented through the city, so we know what is coming at the front of our neighborhood, there's no surprises, you know, the Harris Teeter came, they had a fuel station, it says no fuel station at this point, but, as a community, we said, okay, it, this part right here, you can't do it, but you can do it over here. So, everything went very smoothly, and I think if y'all can just come together, everybody will be happy, and then, 10 years down the road, or even two years down the road, you're gonna get in front of your neighborhood what you want, instead of apartment complexes, or maybe townhouses, or something that you don't want that's residential, you can make it to your benefit. So, I'm done saying, I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen, Mr. McDougal.
I just wanted to make the observation that we've done this before, about delaying and getting the people together, we did it with Enterprise Avenue, so, it's not a new piece for us.
Thank you, BFF. All right, I see no further, no other lights, I don't think. So, that being said-
You're getting a little far.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, I would just ask Craig, understanding what the council's done, would you take action, if he could restate it? I see some members of the public who are here, who may not understand what happens next, and who will contact whom, so-
Yeah, that was the Moan-Wright motion, Mr. Moan, restate it, please.
The motion is to allow 90 days, to allow the parties and staff to come together with a potential compromise, if nothing is proposed within the 90 days, or there's no movement, then the rezoning will come back to council for a final action. Is that clear enough?
Okay, thank you, that was Mr. Wright seconding that, seeing no further lights for questions on the motion, council will ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that is eight to two, with Councilmember Crisp, Councilmember DeVeere voting against. Those in favor, Councilmember Wright, Arp, Robertson, Colvin, Jensen, Hurst, McDougal, and Moan. And I apologize for not reading off the names last time for you. Mr. DeVeere.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, before I moved on, because it wasn't a question on the motion, so I wanted to wait, if you'll give me, I just have a question, land use plan, we talk a lot about it, Mr. Manager, and we continue to beat the drum, that is now 2017, and we have a 2030 land use plan, and we continue to reference it, staff continues to reference it, is there a plan for an updated land use plan? Because that is how we manage growth?
Mr. Manager, do you have something, your light was on?
I think he's-
My apologies, I didn't realize you were asking, question about the status of the land use-
So, the question is, we continue to reference a 2030 land use plan, and it continues to get beat around, that it's not, you know, we're a few years away from 2030, so just, is there an update in process, and could we, give us a status of that?
Yes, as I was explaining to the city manager, we have two pieces underway right now that are wrapping up, we were going to put those two pieces on your September work session, one is the area around the western portion, around the hospital, or the VA Center, and the other one is the Haymont area, and those two would be coming to you as an update at your work session, and then going immediately on the one, to the planning commission for a final hearing, and we have one or two other things we want to do with the Haymont plan, because that Urban Land Institute project, that report just came in, so we want to go over that, fold it in, and wrap that one up. So, yes, we're moving, and the Riverfront plan was one of the first pieces on that as well.
And, Mr. Mayor, council, and Karen, I think this is correct as well, when staff presented the concept of updating the plan at council's request, the cost was somewhat prohibitive, and so, a decision was made that we would look at areas where we anticipate growth or significant changes from the earlier plans, and we would do those in-house, and we, of course, did the successful Haymont plan, the river plan, and as Karen just mentioned that as well, but if it is the desire of council, given the kind of growth that we're seeing, and some of the rezonings, we'll be happy in the coming weeks, after September work session, to possibly come back and tell you what it might look like for us to accelerate that with the use of outside consultants.
Mr. Colvin.
Yeah, Ms. Hilton, I mean, I didn't hear the area in question, I mean, this is the fourth or fifth situation, it's come up about that Jack Britt area that is also high growth, where is that on your calendar?
That area-
If you don't know, write off, I understand.
Yeah, I'm not absolutely certain that the boundary reaches that far south to pick up the existing Harris Teeter area, for instance, but, you know, even in our existing plans, that looks at that area as a node, that's okay, and supported, what we were-
You mean the 20-year-old plan that you're talking about?
Yeah, it had, you know, centers for commercial development and support for the areas-
Well, I think if you're gonna have any acceleration, you gotta take that in consideration. Thank you.
Yeah, we're gonna do a 10-minute break, thank you.
Item 8.2 is a public hearing for the approval of Sunday service to bus transit routes. Recognize Mr. Randy Hume. Welcome, Mr. Hume.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this evening. I have just a brief presentation to introduce the public hearing and then we can answer some questions following that. As you know, you all improved in the fiscal year budget, the current fiscal year, 18 budget, you improved funding for a 10-bus system for Sunday service and that we plan would start in November of this year. One of the things that has to be done is those routes and schedules need to be established and you are the ones to do that. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive comments from the public, to establish those routes and schedules. And again, the routes that we've presented are those that have been worked on by the fact committee and recommended by the fact committee. The table before you is a list of those routes, including Fast Track service. There are 10 routes. They provide a good coverage of the city, east-west, north-south, and a good number of routes. The fact committee spent a lot of time balancing coverage versus what routes would be most productive, trying to make sure that we did the both, didn't boast, because if we just chose the most productive, then there would be areas that would be left out. So they spent a lot of time trying to reconcile that. And again, Fast Track service is part of this. Wherever we run fixed route service, we'd also run that service. This is just to show you a coverage area, a little bit of a map, and you can see it covers a good area. Again, there's less buses than we have on weekdays or on Saturdays. Again, it's included in the budget. If approved tonight, so we can move forward, we'd be targeting a November 2017 startup. It does include Fast Track again and a number of things, including we've made a projection on our ridership which we presented last November. This is just a comparison briefly of what we've presented compared to other cities that are offering Saturday and Sunday service. You see, in terms of number of routes, we're very, very similar in terms of the percentage of routes that we're running versus what's run on weekdays or Saturdays. We actually chose to start our service a little later and run our service a little later than what you might see in some other ones, but basically the same number of hours. Again, we've received in our meetings so far, somewhere around 36, 37 comments. Most of those came at the Transit Center when we met there. All but one of those said that they supported it and would ride the service. And so we did get those, the comments that we got, I guess in terms of things that wish we would do differently was more routes, more coverage. And again, we've stressed that there is a limit to the budget of what you all approved and that's what we have to live within. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions or you could proceed with the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Hume. I don't see any lights. Before we move into the public hearing, let me state the rules again. Individuals wishing to speak at the public hearing should have signed up with the city clerk prior to 7 o'clock this evening. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue. Individuals wishing to speak will be limited to three minutes unless a previous arrangement for a single speaker has been made. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, clearly state your name and address for the record. When you see the lights on the podium change from green to yellow, that is an indication that you have 30 seconds left to speak. When the red light comes on, your time is expired. It's a policy of this board, we will not extend that time. So with that being said, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, call the first speaker.
Mayor, we have two speakers in favor for this item, nobody speaking against. The first speaker is Mr. Albert Bryant.
Welcome, Mr. Bryant.
Good evening, City Council, the mayor, and our distinguished staff, and all the people who are still here this evening. My name is Albert Bryant Jr. I live at 325 Sugar Bridge Lane, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I live in Mr. Jensen's district, District 1. My name is Albert Bryant. Some people don't know me, I'm gonna give a little brief bridge out of what I did. I was a member of the first fast transfer rider committed, appointed in 2008. We got a lot of things done, recovered a lot, we did a lot, and I'm proud to stand up here tonight to 2008. I think I was here 2016 promoting Sunday Bus Service, I'm back here tonight promoting it. Also, I was a member, employed as faculty staff at Fayetteville Technical Community College, working with Bob Massey, former city councilman, he was my boss. Also, Mayor, City Council, I just want to, I'm in favor, and I hope and pray that the city councilmen are voting in favor of Sunday Bus Service. Our people, we want it, they ride the bus. You know, I don't know if you guys see buses, these buses go everywhere. I ride a bus seven days a week, six days a week. I should sit because the bus don't run on Sunday. But we need to have this in place. I think it'd be good for businesses, it'd be good for the city, it'd be all American city, label, this year will kind of give it a little, you know, deuce, a little sugar spice. And I know my people down in Goldsboro, North Carolina, in Washington DC, I went to college, you know, they get on me about, man, you only have Sunday bus service? And all my relatives, you know, come on, get your people down there and get them, you know, let them know, we want service, you can come down there, we want to ride the bus too. And another thing, on Sundays, it'll give people a chance to go down to the house, ventilate, they can go to restaurants, they can go to church, they can go, come downtown, visit, sightsee, they can do a whole lot. Also, the people that work on Sundays, weekends, it'd be good for them because they have a way to get on, to work on bus, maybe not back home on bus, but at least this is progress. And that's why I'm here tonight and I'm so glad that I'm an advocate for the city, Fayetteville State, all for the municipal council, I'm gonna take my hat off, you guys, you do a hell of a, you do a good job. A lot of people don't realize what you guys do and they criticize you. I don't criticize Brother Chris Currit, Mr. Ray Art Robertson, Colvin, because my grandfather always told me, before you criticize somebody, walk in their shoes.
That's great wisdom. Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Vernell Cruz.
Welcome, I mean, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to meet you. I chose to spoke today because I really need the bus.
State your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Vernell Cruz. I live at 217 Lincoln Drive. I love the bus, I love the company, the bus drivers are wonderful, they are the best bus drivers I have ever known, and I really need the buses. I need them to run on Sunday, I need them to run, if that could run 24 hours, I would get on, because that's how they run in New York and our economy have a lot of jobs for people, because they can get the bus. When they can't get a cab, they can get the bus or the train. Anyway, I need the bus because I suffer with a disability and I can't really get around too well, and the bus helps me a lot. And also, I have depression. My depression is based on being bored. When I get bored, I get depressed. And once I have the bus, I can go places, like what the gentleman said, I can go to restaurants, I can go to movies, I can just go out, anywhere, you know? And also, it's not just for me, it's for other people that have jobs, they need the bus. Some people can't afford to buy gas or they can't afford to buy a car, you know? And so I would ask you, please, to vote on that, because we really need it. It would boost the economy for everybody. Thank you for hearing what I had to say.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Thank you. Mr. Hume was happy to hear that about the bus drivers, too. Thank you.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
We'll close the public hearing. Council, I'll go to you for action. Mr. Moon.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'll make a motion that we approve the recommended additions to the Sunday bus service as presented by Mr. Hume.
Second. That's Moon Colvin. Questions? Seeing none, Council, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Item 9.01 is consideration of action on the North Carolina General Assembly Brunch Bill, which is General Statute 106A-205.3. Is there discussion? Ms. Jensen? Ms. Jensen, I'll recognize you for the motion. Mr. Chris, did you have discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I've been quoted quite frequently in the press about being opposed to the brunch bill. I've never really been opposed to the brunch bill. What I was opposed to was providing an additional hour for people. And let me put it this way, I have one concern, and I've said in the press, has quoted me, that I believe the brunch bill is inevitable. But I do have a concern, and that concern is, I have seen people at noon in restaurants with their children, drinking alcoholic beverages, and then leave there with the children in the car and drive home. That's what concerned me. We can't legislate and require people or compel people to go to church or anywhere else, but that will always be a concern of mine, and it's a parenting responsibility and we can't legislate that either. But that was my objection to the brunch bill, was why are we giving them an extra hour to have alcoholic beverages and then drive the children home? Now, responsible parents don't do that. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Ms. Jensen.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the NCGA Brunch Bill, GS 106A-205.3.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second. Mr. Colvin for discussion.
Just had a question for, I guess, the manager. So this came up in the work session and I just want to clarify that. So voting for this bill, you know, I think that we have to be real, that we dress it up, it sounds real good as a mimosa. My question is, if this passes, is a person able to go to a corner store and buy a 40-ounce at 10 o'clock? Are they able to buy other drinks? I mean, the mimosa is the gift-wrapped version, but the reality is, if this passes, does this open up for all alcohols or is it just for restaurants in particular that serve brunch or breakfast?
All alcohol sales.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Council, I see no further discussion. I'll ask for the vote, please, on the Jensen-Moon motion. Madam Clerk, that is 8 to 2 with Councilmember Wright, Councilmember Colvin voting against. Those in favor, Councilmember Chris, Devier, Arp, Robertson, Jensen, Hurst, McDougal, and Moon. Item 9.02 is bid recommendation for the restoration of infrastructure damage during Hurricane Matthew at North Cool Springs Street. Ms. Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mayor, members of Council. Thanks for the opportunity to bring this item to you tonight, bring the bid recommendation for the restoration work at North Cool Springs. As you know, North Cool Springs was severely damaged with Hurricane Matthew, and we were able to receive a bid. After going out to bid twice, we received a single bid each time from Sandy's Halling in Roseboro, North Carolina. The lowest bid was in the amount of $1,675,653.50. The lowest bid was slightly higher than our estimate, and that's due to the highly competitive construction market that we are dealing with right now and the large amount of projects that are currently out there due to all the work that is as a result of Hurricane Matthew. So with that, I basically just recommend that Council moves to award the contract for the North Cool Springs Street repairs to Sandy's Halling from Roseboro, North Carolina, who is the lowest responsive bidder, in the total amount of $1,675,653.50.
Council, entertain motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
One second, Mr. Devier, was that? Mr. Moon.
I'd like to make a motion to award contract for North Cool Springs Street repair to Sandy's Halling from Roseboro, North Carolina, which was the lowest responsive, responsible bidder in the total amount of $1,675,653.50.
Seconded by Mr. Devier, who's the district person. Is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Council, I'll ask for your vote for the award, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous.
We also would like to encourage those that are watching to continue to watch our Hurricane Matthew updates on FayettevilleNC.gov/roads. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Devier.
Thank you, sir. Just another quick question, again, it wasn't on the motion, so I wanted to ask it afterwards. Mr. Manager, this is the second in just a little while that we've had local bids. I know construction is very competitive right now, but we had a security company, a lot of these aren't going local. Just a question on, and I don't need an answer, but if we can get it sent to us on the process for how we are bidding these and advertising the bids and where they're going and kind of that updated process on how we're advertising all these contracts, where we're advertising it, how we're getting the word out. Remember, we had a security company a couple meetings ago and now this one, and I get construction's a little bit different than a security company, but an opportunity to ask about it. If we could just have that information, that'd be great.
Yes, sir. This is a question received from other council members and be happy to provide a more responsive answer to the entire council. Be happy to do that.
Thank you, sir. Item 9.03 is consideration of contract language for Cool Springs Downtown District, Inc., to provide enhanced services for an arts and entertainment-focused downtown municipal service district. Mr. Victor Sharp.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. We're bringing this item before you tonight for consideration of the contract language for the Cool Springs Downtown District Incorporated to provide enhanced services for the arts and entertainment-focused downtown municipal service district. Most recently, this item came before you at your work session, very good discussion and there were some requests for clarity on different points of information. We provided some of that, most of well, that information in your packet in regards to We provided some of that, most of well, that information in your packet in regards to the nonprofit status of the organizations. Of the organization, they were incorporated. The Articles of Incorporation was done on March 3, 2017, and they requested their IRS 501(c)(3) status. Found out that they have received word back that no additional documents will be required for that process to move on. There was also just clarity in terms of what happened at your June 26 meeting, and tonight you had opportunity to review that with the approval of your minutes from that meeting as well. And then, we've also provided you with an updated roster of the board members for the organization. As it stands, there is also, in the bylaws, while there's not a Counsel member that's listed on that roster, it has not been appointed. So, the Counsel member is yet to be appointed. But the roster that you have shows the previous board, and then the current board. So, what you have in your packet includes that information. Then, we also have in your packets the metrics by which we would review the contract and the Cool Springs Downtown District by, and then the contract that spells out the language that we would utilize to carry out the services.
Sorry, Mr. Sharp. None of us have the new board members or the new paperwork.
It should have been an attachment in your agenda packet. And a more updated one was handed out at the end of your agenda, your dinner meeting.
You got it? Okay.
So, the difference was what? You took the transitional members off?
Yes, there were some discussions, I guess, earlier today that may have been confusing. But what is actually in your packet clearly states that there was a transition board that was in place during the formation of the organization. And then, because of your question at the work session, it shows where, the first section shows the current board that is in place, along with the staff as well.
When do these terms expire? I don't see that on here.
I don't think it has the terms. But what we could do, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, if you do have specific questions in regards to the bylaws, or the structure or governance of the organization, we have Patrick Callahan tonight, who's on the board, as well as Mark Regensberger, who is the CEO, President, for detailed questions in terms of their structure. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have. Our ask tonight is, and our recommendation, is for approval, to approve the language for the Cool Springs Downtown District contract award for execution by the City Manager.
Mr. Deviere.
Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion if there aren't any questions.
Yeah, I think we've got some questions. First, I'd like an answer on when these term limits expire.
Mr. Mayor, I'll ask Patrick Callahan to come up and help us with that question.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Counsel, good to see you again.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir. The answer to that is, so the term limits are between one and three years, and one-third of that board is going to be on that one-year term, one-third on two-year term, one-third on three-year term, in order that we have an efficient transfer of leadership, and that the entire leadership doesn't leave at one point in time.
Mr. Crisp.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of concerns. I understand you have submitted your papers to the IRS. I anticipate approval. I'm in favor of this, but I gotta tell you. I'm not liking this Board of Directors. Okay? And I know about two-thirds of the people on there, and the ones that I know are extremely qualified. I don't see any diversity here. This is a city project. Downtown doesn't exclusively belong to the downtown people. When we start putting hundreds of thousands of dollars into the mix to support it. So, my concern is, and you've never heard me trumpet this, but I've got to do it this time, and say to you, where is thy diversity on this Board of Directors? I just don't see it. I'm not simply talking about black folks. I think Jerome Scott is African-American, or whatever. But I don't see any Hispanic, I don't see any Native American, I don't see, I just don't see any diversity here. How did you formulate this Board of Directors? Were they all just volunteers? And if this is the case, once you get rolling, why not have an election after the first year, instead of staggered terms? My question.
Yes, sir.
You want to answer or respond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I think you raised a great point, Counselman Crisp. I mean, needless to say, diversity is incredibly important to the board, and it was in the way we attempted to build that diversity in. The first level of diversity was attempted to be representative of the city of Fayetteville. So, we did an open call. We published it several times, we did word of mouth, there was social media postings. And, in a separate issue written into the bylaws, there are a number of seats that were designated to represent key stakeholder groups, which I think I've talked to this body before, about three from Arts Council, an artist, Ms. Kalinomoy, restaurateur, Ms. Isabella Ifon, et cetera. So, there are specific diversity requirements built in in that regard. Having said that, if you want to speak to racial, or gender, or other measures of diversity, we're not where we want to be. I think there's no question about that. We did, in advance of tonight, prepare some quick statistics. So, for example, out of 27 applicants for these board seats, we do have, at the moment, two seated members who identify as black or African-American. We had four apply, so that gave us in a selection rate, a 50% selection rate. By contrast, we had 23 folks apply who were white. We had 13 selected, and that gave us a selection rate of 56.5%. My point in raising that is that, again, we're not where we need to be. However, those selection rates are pretty close, 50%, 56% respectively.
And I'm not totally talking about racial diversity. I don't see any economists here, and yet, we've got universities that teach this, with experts that could be advisors to you, in terms of economic growth and development of the Cool Springs Downtown District. I don't see an economist on there. And there are some people missing, not by name, but by skill set, that I think would be an advent to this Board of Directors. You know, I'm just saying to you, you really need to take a good look at this. I think you're overloaded with property owners on this. And I say again, downtown does not belong to the property owners. It belongs to the entire city. And when we begin to invest, I mean, invest money in it, then we need some of the diversity there. And you've got some good-looking people on here, don't misunderstand me. I'm not questioning the qualifications of anybody on this list, but I'm bringing up the issue of who's not on this list, okay? I know two-thirds of the people on here, know them very well, and I'm very happy with the names that I see here, because I know they're extremely capable. The other point I want to make is this. You know, I think, Mr. Mayor, that in order to have a voice and a vote, you ought to have some skin in the game. And what I mean by that, I'm looking at the outlay of finances here, and I'm just gonna say it like it is. I don't see a dime coming from the county, and I just don't see how we can put a county commissioner as a member of this board, when they have refused, in my opinion, to provide some skin in the game.
Has the county committed to funding?
As of tonight, Mr. Mayor, they have not committed, but those talks are ongoing.
I'm finished.
If I may point out one other piece, just when we amended the bylaws in June to add those ex officio voting seats for city and county, no one had committed funding at that point.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Colvin.
How you doing, sir? Mr. Crisp hit a lot of the concerns that I had before. And so, not only, I guess, your rate of diversity, according to your statistics on racial lines, was about 13% minority versus other, right? Out of the 15, you said about two, and there were two people selected out of the four that applied. What did you do? What type of outreach did you do to solicit the applicants to participate?
That's another great question, sir. So, there was a range, and I only wish that more of the, close to several hundred volunteers were here to represent that. I'm only one voice among them. But there were multiple committees that were open call, and as one of the board members, you know, had passed me a note about it, those committees were actually far more diverse than the board. Now, again, that is an issue about where we want to go, not where we are yet. But in terms of your asking, how did we?
So, you had diversity on your committees, but the committee members were not qualified to be board members?
With all due respect, I did not say that. Not at all, no. I think part of the issue is that those who serve in a committee oftentimes aren't able to make the time commitment and the other commitments necessary to be on a board. It wasn't a lack of not being selected, that's why I pointed out. Our selection rate was 50%. For African-American was 56%.
So, yeah, two out of four, I guess, but four out of 50, that was where I was going with it. The other thing is, what is your plan? One of the concerns has been that the entertainment that takes place in downtown is not diverse in and of itself. You know, the genres of music, I'm not necessarily advocating for one or another, but a community that is, you know, diverse as we are, what are your programming plans to make sure that everybody feels included with the type of services that you're going to bring with taxpayers' money?
Let me answer a little. I was gonna call you out.
May I address that?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of Counsel, again, thank you for your insightful questions last week, we appreciate that. Downtown has many organizations that do programming. Up until this organization came into being, each one was doing their own thing. Dogwood Festival handled Dogwood Festival, Fall Festival, Fayetteville After Five. Arts Council had the International Festival, and Dickens Holiday, numerous other groups. The Caribbean Festival had their own thing. The African Peace Festival recently had theirs. The As One Prayer Walk. All of these are diverse activities going on in downtown, that were all going on in their own. Our goal, and I've begun conversations with Dogwood Festival, Arts Council was really our parent organization. We're working with them. All of these other organizations. The only radio station within the district is Hot 104.5, Fayetteville's home for R&B and hip-hop. We're reaching out to them. A lot of the galleries are owned and operated by African-Americans, many of them. Gallery 116 has people of all races, but of younger age, for all those millennials that we really want to attract and keep in the community. Do some of the organizations tend towards certain types of music? Yes, they do. If we're not being inclusive, we need to engage with and collaborate with more sponsoring organizations. We're here to exist as a facilitator, and as an umbrella for all this, not necessarily a presenter. I've talked to many of these organizations, and I see us as the, if you will, house manager for the performance space that is the Cool Springs Downtown District. And I pledge you, I'm trying to reach out to as many diverse groups as possible. Some of those are musical, some of those are visual arts groups. We had just recently our very own Marquee Slam Spoken Word Group, sponsored by the Arts Council, started downtown, that took awards at a national level. We're seeking a breadth of diversity and all kinds of different genre of performance.
Thank you. And just a follow-up question, Mr. Mayor, I promised I'm finished. And so, with that, with that same concept, did you reach out in that same regard for board members? Or did you have some other type of criteria? I heard you, what would, do you have a copy of what your criteria for the board is? And I think it's important to note that we're not trying to run your organization, but you're asking for a lot of funding that will basically take care of the financial part of your organization. So, that's why we're asking some of these things.
Yes, sir. No, we welcome the questions, and that's why we'd like one of you designated, of course, be on our board to see those in our workings. But to speak to the specific question you asked, did we reach out? Yeah, absolutely, we did. In terms of the exact rating sheet, or how did we select folks? Once we had the applicant mix, we had a board rating matrix. Would be happy to furnish a copy of that to Counsel.
Mr. McDougal. Thank you. Mr. Arp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you mentioned with the Board of Directors, your term limits are one years, two years, three years, but that's not designated on the sheet. Do you have that? Can you give that to us tonight? Who's on for a year? Who's on for two years? Who's on for three? Do you have that present tonight?
We do not have that present tonight. We'll have that by the next board meeting.
Yeah. Was that question asked last week during our work session? I think the term limit was. So, the county, I noticed your little chart here tonight, and you've got, I don't know if the viewing public can see that, you've got all the contributors to this endeavor, and the county's not on there. The county's not contributing. Yet, the county's a voting member, and I think you mentioned a second ago, you made a decision back in the summer before the funding issue, that you would appoint a city member, and you would appoint a county member. So, my question for you is, our participation as a voting member is not tied to money, is that correct? If we were to disapprove the $100,000 that's been asked for, we would still be a voting member?
Counselman Arp, that's a challenging question for one individual representing an entire organization, as you well know.
Well, I made that question on last week, so it's not a sneak attack. I asked the question over a week ago.
I understand. But part of the answer would be, can the bylaws be amended? Absolutely. So, in the event, for example, that the county never chose to fund, or didn't choose to fund after a period of time, could the bylaws be amended to change that from a non-voting seat, or from a voting seat to a non-voting? Absolutely.
Well, I personally, again, and I agree with my colleague, Mr. Crisp, you know, I'm not supportive of funding an additional $100,000. The $119.5 is the MSD money, and I don't have a problem with that. But I do have a problem with coming to the table with $100,000 of taxpayer money, and we get a vote, and the county doesn't come forward with one red cent, and they get a vote. I mean, who gets the immediate benefit of the property tax downtown? Because of the county, right? And who gets the immediate benefit of the sales tax downtown? Goes to the county, right? So, all the immediate benefit goes to our peers on the county municipal side, and they're not even contributing, yet we're being asked for $100,000, and we're both going to be voting members. I had asked last week that we go back and look at amending that, but you're telling me that's not the case tonight.
Not quite, Counselman Arp. What I'm telling you is that, with all due respect, it takes 30 days for us to publish a notice to amend bylaws, then it takes the next board meeting to do them. I'm also saying that absolutely, we would consider, I mean, again, I'm one person, but I'm sure the board...
No, 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 please don't think I'm attacking you.
I understand, sir. I just want to portray the accurate lay of the land. I'm sure the board would be amenable to looking at a, even a funding contingency, I would imagine, that if county funding didn't come forth in a set period of time, that an amendment to the bylaws could be proposed.
Well, I'd be less than honest to say I'm not disappointed that that contingent offer didn't come forward tonight. It hadn't come forward. And I can tell you that my personal vote will be contingent with that $100,000 upon either the county being a funding participant, and a voting member just like the city, or the county be a non-funding participant and a non-voting member. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Arp. Mr. Wright?
Yeah, I just want to speak to the fact that this is a very important board that we're putting together for the future of the downtown. We understand that, as a Counsel and city staff, you know, we can't really run this downtown area the way it needs to be run, and that's why we're looking for you guys to run this downtown and put in programs that's going to be diverse, and that's going to be cultural, that everybody can embrace throughout the entire city. We want... throughout the entire city. We want our downtown to be a destination, other than the stadium itself, which would automatically bring some activities. We're looking beyond that as well, and we need you guys to be creative. My question is, what is the, the range of the downtown, what does it consist of? You said the Cool Springs, what is the boundaries of the downtown area?
Councilman Wright, so the boundaries are the Cool Springs Street to the east. Actually, do we have a graphic of that?
We have with us a graphic.
Okay. Well, I can read it to you, I'm looking right at it, but so, Cool Springs Street to the east, to the north is Rowan Street and Grove Street. The western boundary is Robeson and Bragg Boulevard, and then the southern boundary is Russell Street.
Russell Street.
And that's essentially the boundary of the MSD district.
Russell Street right here? So, I mean, that's, I mean, that's really not a, okay, so, other, okay. And the reason I ask, because when you're participating in the downtown corridor, wanted to kinda understand what those boundaries are. So, people that's outside of those, those areas, you know, feel like, are they still downtown, or will they participate, or that whatever those activities go beyond Russell Street, you know, you got the detention center there, and then, well, you got, you have really, you have nothing there, but we have an area there on Bunce, is it Bunce? That, that park area that we getting ready to develop with the E. Smith House and all of those things in there. I consider that as being a part of the downtown area. So, we might need to relook that to encompass, to encompass that as well as downtown. I don't think the downtown need to stop at Russell, need to go a little farther out than that. And that, that's concerning to me as well. My other questions have been answered. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Seeing no further questions, council, I'll go to Mr. Devier, Mr. Crisp. All right, one more, one more time, Mr. Crisp.
I did have some concerns on the wording in the, in the draft contract or agreement. And, and it was concerning, I think if I recall, it said something to the effect that the contract could or would be renewed in June, but it didn't give a date for June. And, and that was of concern to me, why it was vague. In other words, should the contact, contract expire on thirty June, or one June, or, or whatever, and I don't want an automatic renewal clause in any contract that we're doing.
Mr. Mayor.
Now, I understand, we can negate any contractual obligation simply by not funding it, but that was of concern to me. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Moun?
In the way I understood it, was we do this first year's contract, supposed to start July first with the budget year, and then the two option periods were contingent upon funding during our budget discussions. So, the month of June was picked to allow, by then we'll know we have to pass the budget, and if it's not part of next year's budget, then the contract doesn't renew. So, that's the way I understood it. It was July first to June thirtieth, and then we'd have to give notice of renewal each June with the passage of the budget.
No, sir, the term says August, whatever, I guess, today or tomorrow's date would be, to terminate June blank, so it would go August to June.
Right. Originally, it's supposed to be July first, but then we asked to come back. So, originally, it was July first to June thirtieth every year, but since we ourselves delayed this, now we're looking at August.
But it doesn't say June thirtieth, that's my point. I don't have a problem with July first, back funding or whatever, but it doesn't say June thirtieth, and that's the part I'd like to see in there.
Okay, thank you. I'll go to Mr. Devier for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna make one comment before I make a motion while I have the floor I waited. I just wanna, and I'm sensitive to inequalities across our city, of course, and racial diversity and makeup. I just wanna point out that we committed in this last budget a hundred thousand dollars to an economic development corporation, along with three hundred eighty-five thousand dollars from PWC, which, as well, and no requirement did we look at the racial makeup of that board. So, and I would say that they touch a, a very large impact of, of our community. So, I just wanna point that out. I also'd like to just point out that I represent a minority district, and I don't look like most of the people in my district, and the person to the left of me represents a majority district and doesn't look like most of the people in his district, and I would venture to say that he and I both represent both of our districts well. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to make a motion that we go ahead and allow the city, the city council approve the language for the Cool Springs Downtown District Contract Award prior to, excuse me, that the city council approve the contract language of the Cool Springs District, Downtown District Incorporated, and allow the manager to go ahead and approve the contract with a date of thirty June as, as an end date versus the July one date that's in it.
I second the motion.
To what amount?
With the amount as stipulated, we, we've already, we've already agreed to an amount. It's already appropriated in the budget, the budget impact is outlined. The motion for tonight, the action needed for tonight is just approval of the contract language, because on June twenty-sixth, we previously approved awarding the contract in the dollar amount, Mr. Mayor.
I second the motion.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Crisp. There is discussion. Councilmember Coleman?
Just, just a brief point of clarification, the, the money was appropriated but not awarded necessarily, and then the other thing is, it was, it was presented as if this was gonna be a multi-governmental partnership, but there are still no commitments from one of the partners, which is a totally different presentation than what was done at budget time. So, I just wanted to make sure we, we clarified that.
And just to clarify, we moved to approve the contract with the award dollar amount. So, what we voted on in June, we voted on the dollar amount, and we voted to award it to this corporation. What we requested is a contract come back.
Under, under the impression that there was going to be contributions from various-
Do you have a friendly motion?
So, so what happens if-
Do you have a friendly amendment?
Sir?
Are you trying to offer-
No, 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 no. I just want to get clarification before, before we get there, because if, if there is no funding from the county, right, because there's no commitment, how does that impact your ability to operate? So, now, are we funding something that may not have, that's been budgeted, that's gonna fall a hundred thousand dollars short? Do you have the reserves to make up for that if there is no funding model? And if so, have you submitted those financials? So, I think that you don't have to answer those questions, this is just discussion on a motion, but I, I think that there's a different, there's a different presentation than what was originally done, so.
I'd love to answer, if I may.
Yes, sir.
So, Councilman Coleman, the answer to that is that last time when we appeared before city council, we did not have a guarantee of funding from the county. We certainly didn't represent that. We tried to be extremely faithful to what the ground truth was, which is the same as it is today, and in fact, there's really zero change in funding from the last time when you approved all this to now, with the exception that continuing discussions have occurred with the county.
You don't need the hundred thousand if you don't get it, to operate.
Are you, which hundred thousand are you discussing?
Okay, yeah. Okay.
Okay, I don't see any further discussion.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may.
Mr. Arp?
I, I would like to offer a friendly amendment, and that the, the motion be amended to say that the council approves the contract language with the Cool Springs Downtown District Incorporated, as awarded, with the following modifications. That the city manager would go ahead and execute the MSD contract agreement and the hundred nineteen thousand dollars as designated, and that the hundred thousand dollars of general fund money be withheld until two things happen. Either A, the county comes up and participates as a funding partner and serves as a voting member on the board, or B, the county does not come up with any funding, and they're removed as a voting member from the board, and that the terms of the board members, the one, two, and three-year terms be provided to the council.
Mr. Devier, Mr. Crisp?
I just wanna clarify, Mr. Arp's intent is that the city manager has full control to execute this contract. If the county chooses not to participate, then the board removes their county slot, or those dollars are withheld. Or, if the county does submit, then he's fully, but I wanna make sure that the county, that the city manager has full authorization, it does not have to come back before this body, so we don't have this discussion for the fifth time.
Now, that would be the intent. If the county is a funding participant, then the manager could go ahead and execute the entire amount. If the county's not, then we'd ask that the board remove them as a voting member over the course of the next thirty days, and that we would proceed with the city's allocation of the hundred thousand from the general fund, and that we would have, it's just not right for, you know, someone who has no skin in the game to be a voting board member when, when the city taxpayers are being asked to hand over a hundred thousand dollars, and that's the whole premise behind the friendly amendment.
Is that amendment accepted?
Mr. Manager, are you able to execute that?
We can meet council's interest with that. I would just ask to clarify, is the city and the county representation is currently contemplated, are they voting members, or they both ex officio, ex officio members?
They're ex officio voting members. Specified in the bylaws. So, in other words, it's, you know, designated by county board commissioners, voting member, designated by the mayor, voting member.
So, it basically is a designated spot for, okay, okay. That makes it-
Okay, Mr. Moun?
I think I understand council's intent. To me, it would be easier to do a blended friendly amendment where we authorize the city manager to execute the contract with the dollar amounts that we've allocated, and then, so, execute the, the full two nineteen five hundred total, and give the county thirty days, and if they don't come up with money in thirty days, the bylaws, you could start to amend the bylaws now, so if they don't have an answer in thirty days, it's not an additional thirty days to amend the bylaws. You can have a bylaw draft written thirty days from tonight. If it doesn't get any money from the county, then they become, or they just come off the board. But that way, the money's allocated, they move forward. I could see delays potentially, but in to meet your intent, we, we've allocated the dollars, we, we've had multiple meetings, and so, let's just, let's sign the contract, let's get it started. Thirty days from tonight, if the county doesn't give money, you already start working, you know, tomorrow, you start drafting updated bylaws, and in thirty days from tonight, then they come off a voting member. Would, would, would that be simpler?
I'm gonna stand, I'm gonna stand on my original motion.
May I, Mr. Mayor, as a second? I, I have real problem with withholding money from the Cool Springs District. They, we're six weeks into the fiscal year. They need the money. They've got to operate. We're not gonna get any money from the county, they're not gonna get any money from the county. I think the only thing that we should do and say tonight, give them the money. We put thirty June in the wording of the, of the contract, and we can also put in there, but not withhold the money, that if they haven't heard from the county with appropriate money, a hundred thousand dollars, in thirty days, they remove that vacant position for a county commissioner's member. But I don't wanna withhold the money from them. They got work to do.
Mr. Coleman?
All right, I'm, I'm trying to find a way for us to get, get past this from my end. I think their concern was what the county was gonna do. My concern was about the diversity. I understand your new board, things didn't go like you like. Are you able to, are you guys amenable to adding in your scope of work goals to make sure that, that as your programming comes into play, that, that it's gonna be inclusive, that your board makeup goals are articulated and, and attempted to be met? Is that something that you do? Because once we award this, you know, we can't come back to you like we did some other organization and say, hey, you need to have different genres of music so that everybody in the city feels a part of it. So, diversity is my concern. So, if we work through whatever they got going on with the county and, and their participation, what is, what's your board's favorability about amending, amending that, allowing this to be a contingency on, on approval of this funding?
I think it's a great, great issue. So, there's a couple options there. I mean, one is the metrics that are currently being tracked, which were proposed by senior city staff. There's an open dialogue around them, and there's an explicit agreement that they can be modified at any time. So, I think adding in metrics that would track, you know, diversity of the board, some measure that would track diversity of programming is an outstanding idea. I can't imagine anyone opposing that.
So, you're speaking affirmatively for the board that you'd be amenable, that they would be amenable to that?
As the vice chair, I can tell you I personally would back in a hundred percent.
Right, I don't know what that means.
I have the authority to speak to the board.
Right there, so.
But, but please hear the words I'm saying, Councilman Coleman, I'm saying that the metrics right now, that, that your body is approving, has been negotiated and can be changed at any time by the city manager.
Negotiations will take place before the funding is authorized. So, I guess, this, I guess this would be for the councilmen to have the motion on the floor. Are you okay with him making, working with them to make some adjustments for those type of goals to be included in the scope of service? Mr. Devier, since this is your motion?
Mr. Protim, I, I think, as, as the vice chair has stated, they can amend the motion at any time with our staff. So, if we give our staff direction to do that, then they can modify it. I don't think it has to-
Can and will are kind of different things. So, are you amenable to a friendly amendment that says that that's a, that's a part of it?
What are we, what are we amending? We're gonna give a requirement, or a minority requirement, or?
Well, what is he saying they're amenable to? I mean, you know, I voiced my concern, so now how you execute it is not my forte. So, the execution of, of the concern that I have, is that a part of something that you-
And I also, Mayor Protim, I also think they, this board understands our intent, and I know our manager understands our intent, and our manager executes off of our intent. So, again, my motion stands.
So, that's what I'm asking. Only thing we can vote on tonight is what we give our manager permission to execute based on. So, I guess, since this is your motion, I'm asking, is that something that we can attach to his instructions? That's nothing, not really a question for these guys.
I'm not sure what you're asking to attach.
Okay, so, diversity is a concern, inclusion is a concern of mine, and this gentleman said that they're amenable to, to negotiating metrics that, that address those concerns. So, my question is, as we, as your motion is on the floor, as it's presented, is this a metric that we can tie to the approval of Doug's authority to do this, so he doesn't have to come back and have this discussion? I agree with you, it's, we've beat this issue pretty hard.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. Looking at the actual contract and how we propose to do the, the payments as well, the city will provide support to the agency on an annual basis in four quarterly payments. And so, I think that in some regard, that before the end of the first or second quarter, definitely, we will have an answer about the diversity.
Doug, you know, anything in writing is what sticks.
Well, I would, I would also probably caution the board not to tie that diversity to the contract. We, it's kind of hard for, for, for us to identify what that might look like. I think what we would instead do is similar to what we did with the baseball stadium potentially, is say, ask them to come back and say, talk about their recruitment efforts, their open, the commitment to diversity and things. Some of the questions that were asked tonight, that would not only be helpful for the council to be able to have that information, but also would probably be very beneficial for Mark and others as they go out and try to recruit additional board members as well, that kind of strategy for diversity. I think that's something.
So, so as I understood this, and you, you, you know, we got our presentation at the work session about what we couldn't, couldn't do on things that are bid out, and so, I did hear her say that you could establish goals. And so, my, my question is, can goals of, of those type, that address those type of concerns be added to this? Madam Attorney, I guess?
Well, no, I can, I'll, I'll try this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll try this. And when we were talking about bidding, it was for good faith efforts, for things about construction and other types. This is about the board composition. Some of the firms that may have participated in, in, in the RFP process may have been private firms, and so, you, they've just chosen to be a nonprofit model, but I, I think we've heard the piece about diversity to the best of our ability, but I wanted to, but I'm gonna come back to that. I wanted to talk about Mr. Arp's piece as well with the quarterly payments. I think that by the time we get to the second quarterly payment, we would have an answer both about- I think that by the time we get to the second quarterly payment, we would have an answer both about the county's participation, as well as, sir, about, um, Mr. Mayor Protem, about how they have addressed the recruitment thus far for the board and how they plan to move forward with, uh, recruitment of board members, um, as well. But beyond that, I, I don't know that staff would be able to evaluate whether or not that those efforts, the results of those efforts would meet.
Okay, okay.
Council's interests.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. That was all my question.
Ms. Jensen.
Um, I'm gonna kind of piggyback off, um, Councilmember Colvin on about the board and a different kind of diversity. Everything, the people that I'm looking here, it seems like everybody has, everybody is within the downtown realm of their everyday life and working. And I don't know, is there anybody that doesn't work or live in downtown that's on the board? How, how many of those do we have? Because, you know, we are putting out taxpayers' dollars, and we are trying to build, you know, downtown for everyone. So I want to make sure that we're represented well. I, I don't know these names, so I don't know.
Isabella Effon lives in District Eight out in Western Fayetteville.
Okay, so that's one.
And I believe she's a minority member.
Seven of fifteen do not work or, okay. Or live in the downtown area. Do, is every district kind of represented probably maybe, or is it all in one? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Yes, I just had, um, just want to piggyback on, on diversity and, and my concerns with diversity of entertainment uh, that's gonna come to the downtown, um, area. And the Dogwood Festival, uh, is a great, great festival. Probably one of our biggest festivals that draws great crowds, okay? Uh, but for a long time, that, that diversity, there was not a lot of ver- diversity in entertainment. We had a discussion a year or so, uh, about that. And I saw a great improvement this past year in diversity of entertainment, but it was kind of scattered out. But main entertainment was pretty much the same. Uh, my concern is, as taxpayers, that those taxpayers' dollars and coming to the downtown area, want everyone to feel like there was thought enough put into whatever those events are that, that included everybody, was inclusive, and that when you come, there's a piece there that you can feel comfortable in. You know, wanna, that makes you wanna come down and, and makes you not feel like an outsider. And so that, that is, that is important to me, that I get a lot of, uh, you know, complaints and a lot of, you know, uh, suggestions from residents in the community as to what, what we need downtown and what would be a drawing card for, for, uh, our residents. And so that is concerning to me. So when you say, you know, you named all of those agencies and all those groups that do downtown activities, the parades, the festivals and all of those things, what type of, uh, of influence would, would your group have Cool Springs over what they bring to the downtown? Would you guys, uh, collaborate? Or I know you say you would be kind of like a, I don't know, a big brother, or you'd be like a manager to these other groups. But what type of, of influence and control would your group have over existing groups? Or, or, or we all encompass into one big group to make things happen down here?
It's an excellent question, sir. Thank you. As I noted before, so many of these presenting organizations are independent organizations. We do not have approval authority over who does. My understanding is Parks and Recreation has approval over who is in the parks and city streets. I've reached out to those organizations already and started the dialogue that we need to have a collective conversation about what comes downtown. Each organization is trying basically to make bank, cover, to cover, you know, Dogwood has to cover.
Excuse me, just to be straight.
Sir.
The city works with the people on the venue, not the acts?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for the clarification. But for example, Dogwood Festival works with the city for approval to use festival park during the festival, to use the streets. They work with their sponsors and funders to decide what acts they're going to use. I've shared concerns with, if I'm misrepresenting that, Mr. Mayor, I apologize.
I just wanted everybody to know that we do not censor entertainment.
Yes, sir.
That's not our role.
Clearly, it's not, and it's not our role.
Yeah, but we put money out as taxpayers to provide a venue, and sometimes we give incentives which equals dollars. So we, we, we do have a, a say as to if we disagree with those acts that come in. If there's not diversity, if there's not, you know, a balance in there, then yeah.
Well, I've already shared your concerns with some of these organizations. And, and I propose to be the voice for the city council, the voice for all of Fayetteville in addressing those concerns.
Okay, sir.
I welcome all your input on this.
That's all I need to know.
Thank you, sir.
My list is exhausted. My light bulbs are burning out. I think we've, uh, we've beat it long enough. Mr. Colvin, state your, uh, state your motion again. I'm sorry, Mr. Devier and, uh, with Mr. Crisp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the motion was to execute, uh, direct the manager to execute the contract with the Cool Springs Corporation. I can't even read Moon writing now. Um, as, as presented in our packet and update the end date to reflect June thirtieth.
Okay, with that, uh, seconded by Mr. Crisp, council, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that is a four to six. Those in favor, Councilmember Crisp, Devier, Wright and Moon. Those opposing, Councilmembers Arp, Robertson, Colvin, Jensen, Hurst and McDougal.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make another motion, slightly different, which, which we're able to do. Um, the motion would be that we move forward, authorize the city manager to, uh, execute the contract.
Mr. Moon, give me just a minute. I didn't recognize you yet. We finished the other motion. The item is done. Madam Attorney's kind of looking puzzled. I want to make sure that I can recognize you for another motion at this time. And it would take a super majority or no? No? Simple majority? Okay, Councilmember Moon, I'll recognize you.
Thank you, Mayor. I should have waited till the little green light. I was called on. I apologize for that. So I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute the contract as presented. And include that within thirty days, if the county does not participate financially, that they will be removed as a voting member from the Board of Directors within thirty days from today.
Mr. Moon, I'm not sure I understood your motion, because the city manager can't negotiate that.
If the, I say we execute the contract as proposed. And if the board tells us that if we do not have confirmation that the county is going to financially participate within thirty days, then they be, they are taken off in that voting, that voting position on the board. Which is what we talked about for twenty minutes, about thirty minutes ago.
Mr. Moon, I think what, uh, what we're saying, I'm, I'm sorry, I wasn't recognizing.
I'm confused. So we, we can authorize the execution of contract right now? No, I mean, we could do that right now with a six-four vote. We can, we can authorize the execution of the contract as presented. That's a council decision. Other council members had interest in not releasing or not, you know, um, releasing the other hundred thousand if the county does not financially participate.
I understand, but that is contrary to the contract. So if
The contract.
If the, if the manager withholds the money and we approve this contract, then they can sue us for not breaching, for breaching the contract.
The contract and the board makeup are two separate entities, the way I read this. The contract is a contract for services with deliverables. The makeup of the board can be amended through the bylaws. And so if you would like to, as a safety feature, when that second quarterly payment is due, you know, they, we need to know, the county has to become, I mean, we, we talked about this for fifteen, twenty minutes. Jim, you gave an example. Mitch, you gave an example. Kirk, you tried to give an example. And we were all about there. And so what is different than thirty minutes ago? And I'm, I'll do it whatever is legal. I'm just, you know, after we get past that four or five hour mark, sometimes, you know, I mean, you see what happens?
You're telling me.
In a positive way.
Item number six in the contract does not allow the manager to withhold the money, is what I'm.
No, I'm saying, we allocate the money as presented. For, okay, so the first year, there'll be four quarterly payments. And we're telling the Board of Directors here that they need to remove the county if they don't come up with funding in thirty days. Now, if they just blow it off, blow us off, then next year we don't renew the contract. I mean, that's, that's a nuclear option. But I think in good faith, the Board of Directors will take the intent of council. And they're not gonna gamble with not getting funded for the following year for something that's simple. That's just my.
Hold the motion. I'm gonna recognize the manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, looking at, um, item six, um, if we come down, the first component is, as Mr. Moon and Mr. Arp and other members of council had discussed, which is the amount for service, the work that would be done within the MSD. And then about, um, sixty percent down, it says, "The additional support of one hundred thousand dollars for the development and management of a vibrant arts and entertainment district will be paid out in four equal payments." Um, I don't, uh, think that the, uh, group would be opposed if we were to add on, onto that sentence, provided that all, um, ex officio members would be equal funding partners or as contemplated. And if not, um, and we can make that language clear. And, um, then that would, and they would not get any of that money. We would change that from saying four equal payments to say, um, probably we could even say two equal payments. That, you know, we'll figure that out. But clearly, we would modify that language to say they would not get any of that additional hundred until the council's interest was satisfied. And we would, we can make that language change to the contract, uh, simply.
Can your board get that amended contract back to us with the dates filled in by the next council meeting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Moon, will you withdraw your motion for an amended contract to come back?
It's, it's a yes and a no. I mean, we're, we're six weeks into the fiscal year. That when they've been put aboard, we were originally authorized the city manager to sign it. He could have signed it on July first. So they have moved forward six weeks and not getting a dime from us yet. So they're incurring some costs, i- if I'm not mistaken. And I, I understand the intent is, we're, we're stuck on the county being a voting member, okay? But we've all agreed that what is being proposed here is, is a good thing for our core set, uh, center city, or city center. Um, and so I, I don't want to delay. Now you're, you, you'll be ten of twelve weeks into the first quarterly payment. Ten out of twelve. And they're already moving forward and doing stuff. It, it, you know, uh, they have to make payroll. They have to do other things.
I understand you don't want to delay. I don't want to sign a contract I haven't seen. Or authorize a contract that is for revision that I've not seen. So.
Well, then, okay, some of y'all stuck on the county's participation. I understand that. I'm not gonna delay a contract because a county member is voting or potentially, who's not even appointed yet, um, just because some members of council have that little craw right now about they're not participating, so they shouldn't pay. It's not fair to what all the work, how many hours, work sessions have we done on this? We've all agreed on this, and we're stuck about someone being an ex officio voting member gonna hold up this entire thing for another month.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Moon.
Can he restate his motion, Mr. Mayor?
What was your motion?
Restate the motion, Mr. Moon. Then we'll go to Mr. McDougal.
The motion was to authorize the city manager to execute the contract tonight. And that the board understands that if in thirty days, the, we don't get commitment from the county, they amend their bylaws and remove that county member as a voting member, the co- member of the county commissioners.
I'll second that.
Within thirty days.
All right, seconded by Mr. Arp. I have a question, reference to the motion. Madam Attorney, is that different than the original motion that failed?
Mayor, I, I believe it is different, but I agree with what Mr. Moon said. After about five hours, we all get a little tired. But I believe so.
All right, so that's the Moon, Arp motion. Yes, it is. Uh, there are some speakers. Are these, um, in concerns of the motion? Mr. McDougal.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with everybody else. It's getting a little, little, little weary here. But all of us, I believe, want this to happen.
Absolutely.
And we want you to understand that. We all want it to happen. The best motion we can give you right now is the one that Mr. Moon has just gave, given. And we'd like to do better. Uh, can we just not have a discussion and just vote on it?
Mr. Colvin.
So, so, uh, Mr. McDonald, if he executes the contract that's in the packet, and what is the fallback if what Mr. Moon said, he wants a part of this motion, doesn't happen? You've already got to execute a contract, so are you gonna amend the contract before the city manager executes it? To say what they're gonna do if thirty days elapses? Or what is the provisions in this contract to, to fall back to if, if that thirty day mark is not met?
Um, I think we're confusing two things. A contract has, is a contract with deliverables, measurables. The makeup, the makeup of their committee is part of their bylaws, not part of the actual contract. So there's nothing stopping us from executing the contract, letting them know that you're, you're gonna remove that seat in thirty days.
Or what?
Or you think they're gonna be back here next year? You, you think people are gonna remember this and they're like, oh, and they're gonna get funded next year? I mean, we got three payments of the, of the hundred thousand.
Does the contract give us the ability to withhold payments in the event that something is not met? That's my question for the attorney. We can't pick their board makeup. It's just a suggestion.
Right, and so what I said, let's move forward with the contract. If the, if the county does not come up with money, we, they have pretty clear guidance, they're gonna remove that. And, okay, what if? We could run, let, I'm gonna come up seven more what ifs so we could stay here past midnight.
No, that was just a question for the attorney, because once he executes it, it's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be the terms of the contract that's signed. So, Madam Attorney, is there a provision in there that, that meets this motion? If not, I'm not understanding what the purpose of the motion, it's a suggestion?
Mayor Protem, Colvin, what I understood, as the manager proposed, if the motion passes, we will work to amend that language regarding the payments so that we would not be making campaign, making payments unless those conditions are met.
So it's gonna be an amended contract that he executes, right?
It would, yes.
Thank you.
Am I up?
Am I up?
Uh, Mr. Devier, then Mr. Crisp.
Thank you. I just want to make two points. One, there's a clause in the contract that says sixty days out for any reason. So if we don't meet the intent, we have a way out. And our manager has a way out. So sixty days regardless of whatever reasons. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Attorney, Madam Attorney. Am I reading that right? I know it's late in the night.
Yes, that's correct.
So we have a sixty day out. So if we don't like something and we don't need to wait a year, we can kill it. We can direct our manager to kill it or, but more importantly, if we're going to make any changes, again, I would ask that it doesn't come back to this body, that we empower our city manager to do his job and that we hold him accountable because we have those metrics and those measures to hold him accountable if he doesn't do our intent. So ask him to, allow him to execute the contract and move on and let, let, you know, we've got an out with sixty days. Whether it's diversity or whether it's, you know, the county not funding or whatever it is.
Mr. Crisp?
The hour is late. All of you have to work tomorrow except me. I want to do this, and I think Mr. Moan is perfectly clear. We have the authority and the ability right here tonight, the tape recorder's running, to amend that contract, and we don't have to see it because the record will reflect what we've said we want to see in the amended contract. And that's what Mr. Moan is talking about, execute the contract and put a provision in there that asks the Board of Directors, if they don't get a commitment of a hundred thousand dollars from the county in thirty days, to take them out of their Board of Directors as a voting member. They need the money. We need to give them the money so they can get busy. Now, the acts that we hold over, your head, Doctor, and your head, Mr. Riggsburg, is if you don't do this, we don't fund you next year. It's just that simple. And we're not simply talking about a hundred thousand. We're talking about MSD money as well. And I don't think they're going to do anything other than what we want done. Let's have a little trust. Let's get this thing rolling here and let's go home, folks.
Previous question, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. McDougal. All right, questions being called. Council, I'll ask for your vote, please.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. I'll entertain a motion for your...
Motion adjourned.
Okay, Doctor?
Thank you very much.